Could you please call the meeting to order?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We'll call Mayor Robert Parkhurst.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe was previously excused. And moving on to Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Gene Goss.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kelly Krebs is also excused this evening.
Okay.
You have a quorum.
Excellent. Councilmember Garcia, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration?
Certainly, please rise if you're able. If you want me in the pledge. Right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands alone nation and democracy, and justice for all.
So now I'm curious what our students from the Josepian School said afterward, but maybe we'll get that during public comment.
Yes.
Yeah, I think last time we had these guests here, I gave an inspiration, and I didn't know they were going to be here about the Constitution and how my father was an immigrant and all that, but last time I gave inspiration, it was about renewal. And I used the Lunar New Year as a catalyst for that, especially given all the tragedies that happened. But I try to lighten it up this time around. And, you know, there's a couple of things that happened in mid-March or end of March. One is it's the beginning of spring, but again, that's renewal. There's also March Madness. So rather than being completely fun, which I probably should have done, and as a Trojan, you know, sometimes it's hard, but I am using quotes from John Wooden, who's a famous UCLA basketball coach. But there's no denying he's one of, has been one of the most inspirational, not even coaches, but people to really be around in the modern era. So I just picked seven quotes that I found important to me, not only for athletes, but also for people in the way we live our lives, because he was a man of good moral character. So bear with me as I read these quotes. Whatever you do in life, surround yourself with smart people who will argue with you. The best competition I have is against myself to become better. Never mistake activity for achievement. Be more concerned with your character than your reputation, because your character is what you really are, while your reputation is merely what others think you are. Happiness begins where selfishness ends. I really like this one. Failure is not fatal, but failure to change might be. And then finally, probably my favorite. Talent is God-given, be humble. Fame is man-given, be grateful. Conceit is self-given, be careful. With that, that's my inspiration.
Councilmember Garcia, that was delightful, thank you so much. All right, so now we move on to approval of the meeting agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda that we have presented before us today?
Mr. Mayor, so I know I have some questions about item F on the consent calendar. And that might kind of turn into discussion between the three of us, I think, possibly within the scope of revenue enhancement and those issues. So I don't know if we want to pull it from consent to have a little bit more discussion or keep it in there just to have some questions as we normally do for consent. Maybe pull the council and see.
Councilmember Goss?
It's your pleasure.
Why don't we go ahead?
I don't have a lot to say about it, but.
I have questions as well, so I think, and especially with your thought process on the Revenue Enhancement Committee, that would make sense. Where would you propose putting it in the discussion lineup? If I may make a proposal, is if we, could we put it as second on the items?
That sounds good to me. So I move to approve the agenda with an amendment that item F from the consent calendar be moved to item two under discussion.
And I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, I've got on here a council report out from closed session. Do we have a closed session since our last meeting?
We have not.
Okay, I did not think so. All right, so the next item is approval for reading resolutions and ordinances by title only. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. All right, now we're on to meeting minutes of March 11th. Do we have any public, do we have any questions or changes to the minutes of March 11th?
So, Mr. Mayor, I was not here, but I did, I did watch, since we only have three, we need to actually have consensus to. I guess we can approve with two, right?
City Attorney, do we?
No, we cannot approve with two, we will need three.
I will just say that I did, I watched the meeting live in real time from where I was. So I don't have any issue, and I know guidance from the League of California Cities says that's okay for someone that was not in attendance to approve meeting minutes.
Okay.
And I know I haven't asked yet, but March 17th, I was not at that meeting, nor was it video or film, so I have no issues with the minutes after reading them, but I want to defer to Mr. City Attorney if that's okay to vote on it.
It is okay to vote on it, Councilmember, the Brown Act does not prohibit councilmembers from voting on meeting minutes even though they were not in attendance.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Great.
So I move to approve the March 11th, 2025 minutes. Well, was it worth any change, I forget, you've, I jumped you.
No, I didn't have any changes. Okay.
We're good.
So I move to approve the March 11th, 2025 minutes as presented.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then March 17th. Any changes?
No.
All right.
I'll move to approve those.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're on to city council reports. Councilmember Goss, why don't you go first?
I'd be delighted. Last week was a busy week for all of us. I started last Monday at Only Place in Town with my council colleagues. We had an official breakfast with Congresswoman Judy Chu. It was public notice meeting at the Only Place in Town. It was very interesting and it was great to see her, she gave us a lot of her time, she's a very busy lady. There was significant discussion about her efforts in Congress on behalf of our city. We reiterated, us meaning our mayor and our council, and our staff, our city manager. We reiterated our list of needs, particularly with reference to the fires, and thanked her for her efforts and her support. Then the next day, last Tuesday evening, we had our honors dinner, annual honors dinner out of the Rec Center, which was, it's always fun, and it was really fun this year. Hats off to our mayor for a wonderful welcome speech and to Rochelle Ayers-Mindy, our former mayor, for being just a fantastic mistress of ceremonies, it was just a lot of fun. Thursday night, Thursday I went to two meetings. At four o'clock, I attended the Council of Governments meeting in Monrovia. Nothing urgent to report there, the meeting ended early, so the board members could go out to a fancy dinner in Covina, which I didn't get to go to because I had to go to the Planning Commission meeting right afterwards, which I did, I attended that meeting at 5:30. And the Planning Commission finalized its recommendations for helping our residents who lost homes in the fire rebuild. Those recommendations are in tonight's agenda, and I look forward to that discussion very hardly. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember Goss, and thank you for joining and going to the Planning Commission meeting, it was an important meeting. Appreciate it. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, so as mentioned earlier, I was excused from the last meeting, so I have some dates going back to the beginning of March. But on March 4th, there was a Chamber of Commerce Board meeting. I was not there because I was not notified that there was going to be a meeting, but I was promised I would be on the correspondence going forward. It was at the Kensington, and President Chris Simeon filled me in on updates. And really, the big update is that they're trying to become a more active chamber all around. And also, they elected their board. Just notable elections would be Chris Simeon serving as president once again, and our former colleague and mayor Rochelle Ayers-Mindy serving as vice president on the chamber board. On Thursday, March 6th, there was a senior community commission meeting. And really, the remarkable part about it was the, was the presentation by staff called Helping Seniors During Emergencies and Evacuations. So the commission heard presentations from both Fire Chief Bartlett and Police Chief Berrientos. There's also a discussion with the commission regarding strategies to identify seniors who may need assistance during evacuations, and ways to increase participation in things such as Nixle alerts and our Genesis app. And just really, there are some people that are afraid of privacy issues and really finding creative ways how to make sure that those individuals that may not be getting those alerts have a way to be notified in case there is an emergency and there are evacuations. And it was one of the longest senior commission meetings I have been to because it was a very good discussion, and a lot of ideas were thrown around about that issue. So I think that will continue. And there was a couple announcements that even scooped the city council. I think Police Chief might have something to say about, about a how individuals can kind of be a police officer for a couple of weeks, and I forgot, the academy, right? Like a citizens academy. So first I heard of it was at this meeting, at the senior meeting and not at a council meeting, so they scooped us a little bit there.
There we go.
And finally, yes, I did attend the honors dinner on March 18th. I really can't add any more than what Councilmember Goss mentioned. I did have the honor of presenting the Wisteria Award for an outstanding organization, and that really was to two organizers, Russ Meek and Fred Thomas, gave them a new middle name as well. So you have to, you have to ask what that is some other time offline, but that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. So mine was a little, mine's short this time. On March 15th, we did a ribbon cutting at Fables and Fancies. It was absolutely wonderful. If you have not been to the store, it is really, really neat place, lots of great books there, really energetic owners on that, so it was a real honor to be there. I also was at the March 17th breakfast with Representative Chu. I echo what other councilmembers said. She was very generous with her time, very committed to helping our city out. We're hopeful that we'll be able to get some funds through her in the budget to help with our public safety. We'll see how that happens going forward. But she is, you know, kind of, she's been a big champion for the city in this area. One of the things that I pointed out, and I always like pointing out, is the National Monument, which is right outside our city limits. She was responsible for getting that there, and I think that one of the things that's notable about that is that that brings additional protections and additional funding to help protect that area. And so it's a great recreation spot, but as we have seen recently with the Eaton Fire, it's also a big risk. And so being able to have that additional funding for things like fuel load reduction and maintenance is, I think, is very important. And then I came in and out of the honors dinner. I had the beginning of a cold, which I now think I'm finally over, as I cough. But it was a really delightful, I'd like to thank staff for all of their hard work in putting it together, as well as the chamber. It has been a great partnership event over the years for our two organizations. And congratulations to all of the winners from that. I see several of them here in the audience. You know, the amount that our community gets involved is really, is really fantastic and is what makes us such a wonderful city, and it's an honor to be a part of those events. And that's all I have. Now I'll move on to the city announcements. So I've got just six tonight. The first one is the World Central Kitchen continues to support those who are impacted by the Eaton Fire by providing fresh locally sourced produce. And they are going to be in the Sierra Madre Public Parking Lot on Wednesdays from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. and Fridays from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So the Sierra Madre Parking Lot is behind the former city hall, that's the one, or is it, no, it's the it's the one that's behind the.
New Library.
The New Library. Oh, the New Library. It says there, Sierra Madre Library Parking Lot. If I read, I would, I'd, thank you. Yeah, so it is at the corner of Auburn and Sierra Madre Boulevard.
Lima.
Boy, look at that.
350 West Baldwin.
There we go, 350 West Baldwin, thank you, that's right, because the next one doesn't. Apparently I need it.
Give me some of that.
Excellent, okay. So I'd like to thank the World Central Kitchen, I'd like to thank staff to find a home for them there. For anyone that was impacted by the Eaton Fire, the police department will be providing free parking permits so you can park your car where you need to during this time of restoration to our city. Registration ends tomorrow for the Senior Excursion to the Academy of Motion Pictures Museum. It should be an exciting event, so if you're interested, please sign up by calling 626-355-5278. Also, free tax assistance is available at the Hart Park House. The final day is this coming Monday, March 31st. And to schedule an appointment, call 626-355-5278, same number. On Mondays and Tuesdays from 1:00 to 4:00, all seniors are welcome at the Hart Park House to play a card game called Bid Wist. And then the final announcement we've got is that the deadline for FEMA assistance is fast approaching. March 31st is the last day to apply for or submit information for several key disaster assistance programs for individuals impacted by the Los Angeles wildfires. You can call the FEMA helpline for assistance at 1-800-621-3362, or you can apply online at disasterassistance.gov. And that is all the announcements. All right. We have a public participation code of conduct, and for our guests here in the audience, I'm going to read it tonight. It's an important part of participating with the city. It says, "Your participation is welcome and invited at all city council meetings. The council requests that participants refrain from making personal, slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. A person who continues to disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting after being warned by the mayor or designee to cease the disruption may be precluded from further participation in the meeting. No signs, posters, or other large objects shall be brought into council chambers or other meeting place if doing so would disrupt or disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly course of the meeting." Madam Clerk, do we have anybody that has given us cards for public items, for public comment for items not on the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, at this time, we have four speaker cards. The first of the four is from Glenn Landon.
Former Mayor Landon?
Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, Glenn Landon, Port 44, skirt of it. Two million dollars. We're entering the budget season, and our infrastructure's falling apart all around us. You look at our streets, their mess. Our water delivery systems are held together by bubble gum and Band-Aids. Our sidewalks are dangerous. The reason is because our public works department is not being sufficiently funded. We're being underfunded. And we know this because our infrastructure's falling apart faster than what's being maintained. Also consider, we have over sixteen million dollars in unfunded projects for the next five years. At the current rate that it's being funded, we'll never do it. Even at three million dollars a year, we wouldn't be able to hit that. We need to increase the public, their budget by at least two million dollars. Even though three million is enough, we need to do it. Look at our streets. Up the street from my house, North Woodland, the 500-foot section from Sunnyside to the dam, sixty-five patches in that section. I know, I know it's going to be fixed. North Lima, forty-six patches from Grandview to Carter. Go down south, Mountain Trail, the last two blocks, twenty-six patches. If that water leaks anywhere, it might as well turn it into a water park. Our sidewalks, I don't know if you're aware, but anytime we have a differential of a half inch, any trip in all of the city is liable. Welcome, North Baldwin, from Victoria to Grandview on the west side of the street. We have eighteen places where we have a liability. Go across the street to the entry to the Episcopal Church, it's one of the worst trip hazards in the entire city, but yet it's right there, and on Sunday, we put every one of those, every one of those people at risk. Our water, if we have an earthquake of any significance, North Lima isn't going to survive it. It's just there being held together. So how do we do this? We certainly aren't going to be able to depend on federal money. I doubt if the current administration's going to do it. Our IIJA, we've never applied for any money from that, and that expires next year. The ARPA, we did get a little bit of money, but unfortunately, you use that, and instead of using general fund money, the nearly million dollars, you took it out and then backfilled it with the ARPA. So what has to be done? At least three of you are going to have to direct staff to increase the budget by at least two million dollars, and you're going to have to take that funding from other things with lower priority. It's not going to be pleasant, but it is necessary. If not, we just kick this can farther down, and we've already kicked it too far down the road. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landon.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Michelle Tremblay.
Good evening. Mayor Parkhurst, city council, police chief, fire chief, residents, guests. I just want to give you a couple of updates on some recent things with bear lovers of Sierra Madre. I'm Michelle Tremblay, this is Sandra Hart. We first want to start by thanking everybody who's involved in any way, small or large, in keeping people safe and bears wild in our beautiful community. The three items I want to share with you include the mini observational study that we've done on Pleasant Hill and Old Ranch, the gift bags that are being given to new residents from bear lovers of Sierra Madre, and also our fundraising effort to have three bear-themed neighborhood libraries in our community. So regarding the observational studies, so in March of 2024, I started a mini observational study on Pleasant Hill and Old Ranch Road. So that horseshoe of Old Ranch Road, all the houses there and all the houses on Pleasant Hill, thirty-seven homes total. And we counted the number of trash bins that were being foraged every week. And the average, one year ago, March 2024, was three to six, okay? Minimum of three, maximum of six. In April, we began the mini interventional study, and we spoke with residents, all of these residents. We reminded them to secure their organics in the bear-resistant bins, and then we asked them to spritz the lids with pine cleaner, and we provided everybody with a spray bottle of pine cleaner. For eleven months, there has been zero raided bins at these thirty-seven homes. In five more days, it will be one year. The second thing I wanted to let you know is these are the little gift bags that we're now giving out to new residents from bear lovers. There's a couple sheets of paper in here, and the first one is, you know, Quick Tips for Bear Safety. The second one is the Athens Recycling Cheat Sheet. And then we have a bottle of pine spray, and then we have a bear whistle attached to the handle. So I think we've only distributed this to about six new residents so far, but as we learn about new people coming into the community, we will continue to do that. And then the last thing I want to share is that we're immediately starting a fundraiser for the three neighborhood libraries. We already have the locations in the Upper Canyon, that will be on Churchill. In the Lower Canyon, that will be on Woodland. And we're working on the main part of town. So our bears are coming out of their soft hibernation, so this is the perfect time for us to get more education out to our community. And the funds that are raised will be used for both the neighborhood libraries and for the books. And we'll have, it'll be all bear-related, bear books for both adults and for children. And special thanks to the resident on Skyland, he knows who he is, who donated the first library to us. And that's.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Oh, I ran out of time, okay, that's it. To donate, go on our website. All you need to do is Google "bear lovers of Sierra Madre," and we're the first pop-up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations on your Public Safety Award. I hate cutting people off, I'm so sorry. All right, who's next?
Mr. Mayor, the third speaker card is from Katrina Hittstuck.
Good evening. I'm actually coming to talk to you about, I've got an ask for you, which is, would you consider creating a five-year plan for managing the city natural lands? So all the land that abuts people's properties, I live in the Upper Canyon on Orange, so it doesn't actually directly abut my land, but it abuts a lot of my neighbors. And you can imagine with the fires and everything else, there's been a lot of discussion about that land and how it's going to be managed, both for life and for property. We've seen the destruction of fire, we've got ongoing mud mitigation, mud concerns, fire concerns. Right now, we obviously, we have very fragile soil as well, and a concern that we want to protect the land for animals and for native plants. So I'm not going to ask you or tell you how to do it. I'm asking, is there a way to have a five-year plan from the city of how you're going to manage the city lands? I mean, I know, for example, Mayor, that you worked with the Conservation Corps and had them come in, which was amazing, and I think that probably helped those hillsides during the fire, because we had a lot of the brush taken out, right? So that was an amazing event that happened. Knowing that right now we have fragile soil, et cetera, the situation we're finding ourselves in is a lot of confusion, which is, should we go up there and plant, should we leave the soil alone, should we, I don't know, do whatever? But, so I think what would be really helpful is to know what the city's policy is, how you're going to manage it, for us then as homeowners to think about, how do we make sure that what we're doing and what you're doing actually makes sense, especially for those properties where the city land is right above private property? So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hittstuck.
Mr. Mayor, we have a speaker card from Mariana Akizian.
Hello, Sierra Madre. My name is Mariana Akizian. I am here to represent the eighth grade class of St. Gagu Hocepian School. I have happily attended this private Armenian Christian school in Pasadena for the past thirteen years of my life. The city of Sierra Madre has always been like a second home to me. The city of Sierra Madre has always been like a second home to me. Sierra Madre is the city that holds many of my childhood memories. From sleepovers with cousins to my first time walking a dog. I played tennis here, played at the playground at Memorial Park here, and did karaoke at my aunt's house, which is up Camilla Drive. But even aside from the amazing memories I made here, Sierra Madre in general is an amazing city. My grandmother and I especially love spending time in downtown Sierra Madre and sitting at the island area. This city has always made sure that visitors and residents have a nice stay by doing amazing events. My personal favorite will always either be the annual scarecrow competition or the movie nights. I want to end off by saying thank you. Thank you to all the first responders of Sierra Madre. Thank you for giving my family an amazing and safe city to live in. Thank you for always thinking about the citizens and finding ways to keep our citizens happy. Thank you.
Thank you and all your classmates for coming to the meeting tonight. I think it's really important that we get the youth understanding civics and participating in this. So thank you for coming and giving us, uh, public comments. All right, um, do we have any public comments that were, um, submitted by email?
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk's office did not receive any emailed public comment, and we are, uh, we do not have additional speaker cards at this time.
Great. All right. All right, so we'll go ahead and close public comment, and we'll go on to our first presentation. Uh, I think Fire Chief Bartlet, you're up first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members Garcia and Goss. Um, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the Sierra Madre Fire Department's twenty twenty-four annual report. Uh, tonight I'll be providing an overview of our key accomplishments and ongoing initiatives and a glimpse into what's, what's ahead. Just a, uh, real brief department history, especially for those that still aren't aware of, of the transitions we made. Uh, the Sierra Madre Fire Department has proudly served the community since nineteen twenty-one. And we began as a volunteer organization responding to calls with hose reels and hand-pulled carts. Over the decades, we've evolved, moving into our first fire station in nineteen twenty-eight, then to our current home in nineteen seventy-six. In two thousand nineteen, we transitioned from a volunteer to a full-time professional department. And today, in two thousand twenty-five, we continue adapting to meet the needs of Sierra Madre with professionalism and pride. Sierra Madre Fire Department is more than an emergency response agency. We're, we're forward-thinking organization committed to safety, education, and community well-being. Our mission is to serve and protect every resident, business, and visitor through excellence in service. We're currently staffed with eighteen full-time professionals, including myself, one fire chief. We have three, uh, fire, or fire captains, three fire engineers, nine firefighter paramedics, one administrative analyst, and one EMS administrative captain, uh, making up our full department. And out of there, uh, we actually have five divisions, uh, which you can kind of equate to as five different departments within the fire department. Uh, that would be administration, operations, EMS, training, prevention. Excuse me, and prevention. Um, I'd also like to, to note that because we have these divisions and a lot of the responsibilities that we do, a lot of us wear multiple hats, um, which is a, a twofold thing. We do have, uh, does go towards career development. A lot of our junior folks learn about the fire service and everything that's entailed with it, um, a- as well as being able to delegate, supervise, and, and the like. Um, I'm proud to, uh, to say in two thousand twenty-four, we were able to bring back our arson investigation, uh, which is staffed by firefighter paramedic Larry Chu. Uh, so he's been heading that up and doing an excellent job. He's part of the, uh, regional, or excuse me, an area task force here within Verdugo to not only investigate any fires within our city, but also aid other communities, and we get reciprocity with that. Uh, so if he's not available, we will get other investigators to come into our city to help us out. Uh, and then we also have firefighter paramedic Scott Rosever, who, um, is on modified duty at the moment, but we're using his skill set as a certified, uh, state fire marshal certified, uh, inspector. So he's been working in our prevention division, uh, on all our inspections and, and the like. So, uh, kind of getting into what those inspections look like. But, uh, like I said, everybody kind of wears their hats, um, and the captains are kind of doing divisional chief type of work to make sure that all our, all our, uh, functions are, are working properly. Within our administration, uh, section, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget is, is basically just under four million dollars. We're at three point eight million dollars, where our personnel cost is the majority of it, just under ninety percent. Um, and then our suppression and EMS divisions kind of make up the rest of it. So that, that accounts for all the equipment supplies and the needs that we have. Uh, as you can see on the right of these charts here, although we're not for profit and we're not trying to make money, we do look at opportunities to recover costs or seek reimbursements for some of the, some of the mandates that we're, we're having to do or when we're responding to a state's mission on wildland fires. Um, we were able to bring in about twenty-one percent of our total budget, most of it being through EMS transports, uh, which we're actually just shy of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're, uh, we're continuously looking at ways to increase cost recovery and making sure that, uh, again, our mandates are covered and we're not, uh, we're not fronting the cost for that as a city.
Before you go on, can I ask a quick question? The, the four percent EMS there, so that's four percent of the EMS calls you've got cost recovery on, or what does that?
I believe that's probably going to be, going to be a typo on there, sir. I apologize for that.
That's fine.
Yeah, we, it's going to be a total of about six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that we recover. So it is, it is the bulk of our, our cost recovery.
Okay.
Which, which you said, at about twenty percent, twenty, twenty-one percent of revenue, was that what, what you're saying?
We, we do recoup, um, about twenty-one percent of our total budget.
And that is most of it right there?
Most of it will be EMS transports, yes.
Thank you.
And it's probably eighty-four percent, just did some quick math in my head. Um, but, um, the, the OES, um, is that, is that the equipment that we had returned, or is that a different, different method?
Um, actually, yeah, I, I, thank you for that opportunity. Our, the ISA program is actually a program that we have with the Rio Hondo Community College, and it's for an instructional, uh, service agreement. So basically, our, our personnel are enrolled within the, within the college, uh, just as if we were attending classes there. And, um, we get a, an apportionment of, uh, the college's reimbursement from the state for training that we do. So we are actually, uh, again, getting revenues on this case, it's not even cost recovery, uh, revenues for, for training we have to do anyways, that meets our standards and, and criterias. Uh, the OES category is for, uh, mutual aid response to the state's missions on, on, uh, wildfires and the like. And then our, our PSP is the Paramedic Subscription Program. Um, so thank you for that opportunity. I was remiss on, on, uh, on highlighting those. Uh, moving forward, and in a little segue to our paramedic subscription program, we're, we're pleased to announce that, um, after many years of having this and, and just having an individual program. So for instance, a household of five would have to pay five different individual, uh, rates for this. But we were able to get passed and into the new fee schedule that will be starting up. Um, we have implemented, um, some tiered programming, if you will. So our individual will still be offered at eighty-nine dollars. We'll have a couples, um, so basically two household members for a hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is going to be a savings. It drops it down to about seventy-one dollars per person. A family, uh, so a, a family household of three for a hundred and fifty-eight dollars, drops that down to fifty-six dollars per person. We'll have low income as well. That'll be for the entire household at forty-five dollars, but that has to go through the city's verification, same as we do with the water bills and such. Uh, and then we're also going to be, um, offering up a business, um, subscription program, if you will, for, uh, up to ten employees at a hundred dollars, and every ten employees after that, or up to ten employees at that, an additional hundred dollars. Uh, these plans are going to help, uh, reduce out-of-pocket costs for residents and, and for, uh, potential business owners and their employees uh, during any medical emergencies where we have to transport patients to the hospital, uh, and whatever the, it'll make up the difference, whatever the insurance does not cover. So we won't be looking to the individuals for any, any additional costs out of pocket.
Quick question, Chief. So we just approved those rates recently, right? So are we, have we already implemented those in terms of charging, charging people?
Not, not yet, sir. That, that's coming up at the new fiscal year. But, um, I, I wanted to make sure that we mentioned that we approved this and, and, uh, to get everybody kind of excited for it, start, uh, start marketing and getting out there so we can, uh, we can get a lot better enrollment than we currently have.
Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the whole city enrolled in this. It's, it's a great benefit.
And if, if the household is, is enrolled in the program, it's, it's members of that household. So if you've got a guest or someone there, they, they, they wouldn't necessarily be.
That's correct. You mu- you must reside at that residence.
Okay.
Uh, moving on to our, our operations. Sierra Madre Fire Department provides twenty-four seven response to fires, rescues, hazardous materials, and much more. Uh, we collaborate closely with surrounding agencies through mutual aid and automatic aid. And in two thousand twenty-four, we responded to a total of fifteen hundred and fifty calls for service, which was an increase over last year of, uh, a total of fourteen hundred and, uh, fifty-four calls for service. So we're, we're really pleased with that. Um, a lot of it's attributed to, obviously, the, the inclusion into automatic aid. We are going on quite a few calls. Matter of fact, I think, uh, the, the guys that are on today, uh, within the last, uh, two to three shifts they were on, they've been with, to four automatic aid fires to, to help assist our neighbors. Um, so whatever reason, uh, some fires are happening outside of our, our community, which is nice that it's not happening here, but we're able to assist our neighbors. And so, uh, really pleased with, with the, the newfound, um, ability, since we've become career, to, to help out the neighbors and get that reciprocity here as well. So it's been really, really good for operations. Our e-medical med, uh, excuse me, emergency medical services is, uh, basically makes up sixty-five percent of our total call volume, uh, for twenty twenty-four. And then in, uh, in November, um, after a Department of Health Services audit, we were able to also put Engine Forty-One, uh, from an assessment, uh, paramedic engine to a actual medic engine, which basically means it's fully equipped and has all the, all the supplies and equipment to include personnel as our ambulance does. So now we actually will have two pieces of advanced life support equipment available to the public twenty-four seven, uh, which they, again, just doubles our capacity.
So Chief, i- in that, in that capacity, um, we could potentially be separated, and the li- emergency lifesaving can happen, but we, we need somebody else to do the transport if it was Engine Forty-One out. Is that how it would work?
Uh, it, it could work in a, in a multitude of different facets, if you will. The way I like to really look at it is, the way we were sitting beforehand, if we had an advanced lifesaving, uh, or advanced life support, uh, call or ALS call, and our ambulance transported, our engine would be here and would be able to start ALS interventions, um, if you will, with the equipment they have, but they didn't have all of the equipment, nor did they have the, the medications and, and this, and the like. Um, with that, then another agency would have to come in, and to be honest with you, they would take the billing rights. So we are also being able to capture some additional billing rights by having this, this, uh, this resource in. So if the, if our ambulance has gone to the hospital transporting a patient, the engine could now come in and do the exact same thing as the am, as the ambulance did without being able to transport. We would get somebody else, but it would, it would still, we would still recoup some costs for the advanced life support, uh, interventions that we're using with the engine. Uh, likely, uh, or similarly, we can go to another, uh, city, Arcadia, Pasadena, or any of our neighboring agencies with the engine and start advanced life support, uh, interventions as well and, and get another ambulance from that, from somebody else. So, um, not only for our own community, but even our neighbors, I, it's, it's a big improvement from what we were being able to offer before.
And, and remind me, I know we have two engines, um, one that's, you know, we always have two, and we, we cycle them through just in case one breaks down. Do we, do we have that redundancy for, uh, the, the medic vehicles while that can transport?
Yes, sir. We, um, our, our standard is, we basically, we have two engines and two ambulances. Uh, one engine and one ambulance, we, we refer to as our frontline. Those are the ones that are, are staffed and ready to go at, at, at the call. And then we have the engine and ambulance in reserve. So, um, in case something breaks down or we have to send one out for an annual maintenance or, or inspections, we do have that backup. Um, and we also have them as additional resources. For example, the Eaton Fire, we put everything in service. Everything that we had was staffed and out there. Um, and so, uh, we also are looking at some opportunities to, to utilize that second ambulance, uh, for some additional revenues. Um, so we're, again, as I led off on this, we're, we're, we're trying to be creative and forward-thinking and, and trying to look at ways that we can lessen the burden on our general fund by, by looking at some other opportunities, so. Uh, absolutely, we do have both, and we do have a planned, on, uh, planned replacement for both, if you will. So, um, typically about twenty years in service for each engine, uh, ten years as a frontline and ten years as reserve. The ambulances, um, they get a lot more mileage and wear and tear on them, to be honest with you, and they, that's probably closer to about a seven-year replacement plan.
So I know we replaced one of the engines recently, so we've got, that says to me, we've got about ten years to the, the engine's replacement. Where are we with the, the ambulances?
Yeah, off the top of my head, uh, due to our, our capital, uh, replacement plan, we are probably due for an ambulance replacement, within the next couple of years, about two years, we're going to have to replace it. But, um, with supply demands and manufacturing lows, uh, we, we're going to need to get started on it sooner than later, to be honest with you. Uh, engines right now, uh, the cost is way up. Uh, we paid, the engine that we're looking at right now is probably running us a mil- a, a minimum of a million dollars, the one that we have now, um, and the lead time can be as long as two to two and a half years to receive that.
The, the, um. The ambulance isn't a million, right?
The ambulance will not be a million. Um, probably estimated, uh, increased cost from what we've probably, I, I probably put it somewhere in the neighborhood of, of five hundred, six hundred thousand, that's fully equipped. Um, and to go, yeah, the, the equipment is not cheap. But again, we are outfitting these, uh, these apparatus with the best that we can, we can buy, um, to be safe and to be reliable. We're, we do a good research on, on everything we're purchasing, and, uh, we do our best to try and get the top of the, top of the line type of stuff because of, of the wear and tear. So these things have been, um, tried and, and, and tested through departments throughout the nation. So we do, we do a lot of research that, at least our money, what we invest in is going to last us. They're not going to be in the shop all the time. And moving on, moving on to our, our training. Our, uh, our team nearly doubled our required ISO, uh, training standards, uh, which is currently two hundred and thirty-two hours per firefighter. Um, really happy in the efforts that we're doing, as far as that goes, like I said, uh, nearly doubled that requirement. Uh, some of our training highlights include firefighter survival, what we refer to as RT one thirty, which is a required wildland refresher course every year, uh, along with numerous inter-agency drills, uh, which is something that the automatic aid has, has brought forth to us. We spend a lot of time with our neighboring agencies, um, going over standardization and interoperability. Um, so when, when we get together, as we always do on major events, everything, we, we know how each other are going to operate. Uh, we look at each other's equipment and know how to, know how to operate that, and, and it's, it's worked out really well. It's built really good relationships, uh, not only between myself and, and my peers at those agencies, but all the way down to, to our firefighters. Uh, it's really nice when they get on scene and they know each other by name, and they're, they're very familiar with each other. So, uh, the training efforts have, have been outstanding and, and move forward. And, uh, no, sir, that's not going to be you in that burn container.
I, I don't see. I'm having flashbacks.
Yeah. That is a, that's a, that's an additional, we, we're trying to do this multiple times a year, um, even though, uh, especially for the audience and those at home. Uh, we did invite council last year or the year before to go through this, this live burn experience down at Rio Hondo Fire Academy. And, um, I, I think it was quite the experience for everybody, got a little bit of appreciation of, uh, a little bit of heat.
And you're, you're not seeing in this, this one, but, uh, the flash. And you're you're not seeing in this this one, but the flashover, when that smoke actually turns into fire over your head.
Yeah, just a real quick recap of this. This is a training container. It's like a big C container that you would see in the ports or on the back of big semis. But you could see the people up front, there's a little short wall there. That is basically, if you look at the top of the wall, that would represent the floor of a of a occupancy. So, in reality, all these folks are sitting below the floor level, which does not exist when we go into fires. So, all we're doing is we're seeing at that higher level where the smoke comes down, and if we don't do things in time, that flashover means that all that smoke will just instantaneously be on fire. And if we're not capable or if we're not careful and haven't made some kind of interaction to mitigate those those the smoke in there and the conditions, we will be in that. And sometimes, it's not survivable. So, we we go into these these kind of containers and these drills to to look at the smoke, the way that it flows, the color of it, and everything else. So, when we're in an occupancy, we know what we're looking at. We can kind of judge, should we be in there, should we not be in there? What kind of time do we have? What do we have to do to to change the conditions in there that are more favorable for us? So, again, a lot of good training that we're doing. Some of these pictures here, even that video. Sawyer didn't come in today. I think maybe he saw I was going to be on here. But that's that's Sawyer Wooton, who is one of our newest firefighters. He's been here for over a year now, but that was part of his probation. We were down at Monrovia Training Tower down at Station 102, which is a a regional satellite training facility for us. So, we we get, again, part of all the automatic aid stuff we're doing, we get to go down and and use some of the facilities and and get some things done. So, just some other snapshots of of some training that we've done throughout the year. Moving on to our other division, fire prevention. In in 2024, we completed 1,942 inspections across apartments, defensible space, AB-38, which I can kind of get a little bit into, and schools and churches. Schools, churches, and apartments or multifamily residents are mandated inspections. We must do, and so, we accomplish those every year. That's part of what I refer to as some collateral duty for Scott Rosevere. He's been scheduling all these, laying them all out, making sure all the required documentation and everything is available to our our engine companies and our folks that go out and do these inspections, and then he collects that information and follows through to get people compliant, basically, which we we do have a little bit of an issue with sometimes, but most of the time, we get there. But for example, our apartments, we conducted 267 inspections for apartment apartments, which include re-inspections. Out of that, there was 139 apartments that were actually inspection inspected. Eighty-three were issued correction notices, and 25 were issued a secondary notice. Out of that, 20 were turned over to code enforcement. The the biggest offender of that, which we understand because it was newly implemented, was the no smoking signs. So, we're we're working with people on that. They're not being fined for it, but we're trying to educate everybody that eventually, if you're not complying, you you potentially run the risk of fines, so.
Those 20 were not no smoking?
Correct. And that would that out of the not all those 20, we had 20, but that was the top.
As top.
Yeah, the 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 top thing that we found that needed correction. The other thing we did was defensible space, which is all our our brush inspections. So, for last year, anything north of Grandview, we did an inspection on to make sure that all the vegetation management was was within compliance. So, we did 1,630 inspections. Again, those included re-inspections. Of that, there was an initial 1,413 properties that were inspection inspected, 181 received correction notice, 26 received a second, and 10 were sent to to code enforcement. Top issues with that were basically vegetation near the roofs, poor street clearance, not 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 easy access for emergency apparatus and equipment, and then dead vegetation. Another inspection that we do is AB-38, Assembly Bill 38, which is basically associated with anybody that is going to be selling a home in the very high hazard fires, the severity zone, is is obligated to do this inspection. So, it's basically, again, another brush inspection, if you will. We go out and and we make sure that they are compliant in order to and and we we sign off on them, and then that way, part of their sale is they can show that they're they're currently compliant. So, that is something that is sort of relatively new within the last couple of years, and we've been doing that. And again, we've recouped costs of that off of fees, because there is a there is a benefit to the homeowner that is selling, right? They're they're looking to hopefully get get a profit off that sale, so the fee for us to do the inspection is very nominal. Last one that we have and.
Chief, on the on the AB-38, do the new maps have a big impact on those inspections?
Great question. I I was wondering if the new map would come up. Obviously, yes, the new the new fire hazard severity zones, the maps came out yesterday from the state, and we're looking at those, and and those will be coming to you later on in this year, as far as we we are going to have to approve some new ordinances. But as far as to an answer of your question is, the new maps do not, unless we are going to, you know, move forward with some some change in our ordinance as far as the mapping goes. But anybody, I have to look at that, to be honest with you, because we are implementing not only very high, which we've always had, now we will now be introducing high and moderate severities. My I got to do a little more homework on the high, but the very high will remain the same. If you're in the very high hazard fires, severity zone, nothing is going to change for you. But I'm going to guess at this point, high severity zone will also follow suit as far as those inspections go, because I know we're going to be looking at Chapter 7A home hardening compliances with high and very high as well. And lastly, as far as our inspections, again, some of our mandates are children, are are schools and churches. Twenty-six inspections, again, included re-inspections. So, we had 15 churches and schools that were inspected, 10 were issued a correction notice, one a secondary notice, and the one that one was sent to to code enforcement. Top issues there are electrical hazards, alarm maintenance, and extinguisher upkeep. Just a little more, little more pictures and everything on our fire prevention. Last year in 2024 was the last year of our CAL FIRE grant that we received. As one of our public comments mentioned earlier, where we were able to get the California Conservation Corps in and do a lot of fuel mitigations, which I think really assisted us in the in the Eaton fire. We were able to take a lot of fuels and heat out of that, and in my opinion, quite a bit of additional Ambercast from the areas that we worked on. The other thing that we do, and we're very proud of, is our community outreach. In 2024, we took part in 35 community events where we focused on educating homeowners on home hardening and vegetation management. We provided public safety programs to the schools, both public and private. And then, we also empowered residents with lifesaving skills, for example, sidewalk CPR and first aid techniques. We supported school programs and city parades, special events, including Fourth of July Parade, Little League, girls softball parades. We do our annual fire prevention festival, Easter egg hunts, and even the even Santa's Village, along with the association still supporting the movies in the park, a concert in the park. Hopefully, one day, again, our Huck Finn Fishing Derby and the like. So, we're we're extremely proud of the community involvement that we have, and we look forward to continuing that, even as you see in this one video, our our partnership that we've done throughout the years with with the library on the the big hit of the pumpkin smash that we do. And I think Mayor Protem Lowe was able to destroy one of the pumpkins that may or may not be associated with the Padres. So, I think that was right around the the time of getting into the playoff season, right? So, again, community events are a big part of what we do. We like to be engaged in the community and and show that we we are part of the community as well. Just kind of talking about maybe a snapshot in time right now, obviously, this year has led off with quite the amount of events, probably some would say a career's worth in in probably the first two months. Obviously, we led off January 7th with the windstorms, which quickly turned into the Eaton fire, and then followed by the the winter storms and the mud and debris flows. So, you know, I I couldn't be prouder of our our staff and and our teams for getting out there and 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 really affecting a lot of good work. You know, with anything like this, unfortunately, we can't get everything, but I know that they put everything they had into it, and as well as as our neighbors who came to assist, and then eventually, the incident and the resources that the incident brought. My thanks is to all resources, all public safety, Public Works, city staff, council, and and our community. This in in true Sierra Madre fashion, I think we 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 came out on the better end of this because of of who we are here at Sierra Madre and working together and and making things just happen. So, these are some of the major events, but again, with those, there's always learning opportunities. So, we're looking at ways to now to see if if and when this ever happens again, how do we how do we do better? Are there are there opportunities for response, communication, equipment, personnel, whatever the case is, we're we're going to be taking a look at that. We I know we're doing after-action reports throughout the city, and we'll we'll be taking a look to see where our opportunities are. But again, in in a snapshot in time, I think we did amazing work, and I'm not just trying to be biased, I really do.
I think all of the council and all of the residents recognize that. You guys did just phenomenal work on that, and you you saved homes, so.
We appreciate that, sir, yes. And we we've received that gracious feedback from our community as well, and it's it's it really is very meaningful to to the staff, I know that. Another not shameful plug, but a plug in regards to all this, again, I want to bring to everybody's attention some of the platforms that we're utilizing to make sure that we, again, how do we do things better? And I think communication is one of them. I think we did a pretty good job on it, especially compared to some of the other neighborhoods that I've heard about, whether that's true or not. I know we've done a really good job, and we got the message out about as quick as we could. Through a couple of the platforms, Genesis Protect, I invite everybody to either download that app on their phone or at least be able to access that through through the web. It is a an app that will let you know what zone you're in, what status that zone is in, whether you're in mandatory evacuation orders or evacuation warnings, whether we're going to repopulate a certain zone or what have you. We've also transitioned this over to our mud and debris flow, where Public Works has picked it up and 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 their their staff is actually utilizing that to notify the residents as well. Smart 911 is an is an opt-in application, but that will allow us to communicate what we're doing as far as evacuations or or anything that's emergency-related for that matter. We can do that via landlines, mobile phones, text messaging, emails, social media platforms and the like. And then, again, we are looking at even enhancing what we're doing right now. But these are a couple of the platforms we're using, as well as the Nixal alerts that we we have as well. But again, an opt-in platform. So, we are asking the community to help us, help them, by by utilizing some of these tools that we're presenting. And I I know not everybody is tech savvy or has that ability, so we are looking at other ways to bridge that gap. And I'm hoping that we can bring some stuff forward here in the near future on some some plans that that we're trying to lay right now for that improvement.
It'd be good for you to to hear from what the senior commission had to say, their report out when they get.
The basically, looking ahead in for 2025 and beyond, is we're going to be focused on enhancing department capabilities.
Chief, why don't you just pause it? Thank you. Thank you, students. We appreciate it.
Sorry, I bored you guys, but go home and get that homework done.
We understand.
And just and and to kind of wrap it up, looking looking ahead, in 2025, we're going to be focusing on enhancing department capabilities. We'll be utilizing the findings from our recent master plan to to guide. This will help guide us to our updating our strategic plan and ensuring we prioritize matters, the things that matter the most. And our our goal remains clear, which is to protect Sierra Madre with excellence, preparedness, and innovation. And with that, I'd like to, on behalf of myself and our department, thank the council for their continued support. We are excited about the time to come with and working with with all of you and to see what we can accomplish in the future. And with that, is the end of my report. Happy to answer any questions.
It was a phenomenal report, Chief. Gets better every year. Thank you for everything that you and the crew do for the city, especially the last three months. Anything from either of my colleagues?
Just a quick comment. The upshot of all the your discussion about enhanced technological capabilities of our equipment and the training of our people, you didn't say, I wish you would, but that means people more lives get saved. I mean, potentially, and it's just a matter of time, more lives will be saved because you guys are trained better and we have better equipment. As the mayor said, every year is getting better and better, so keep up the good work.
We appreciate it, sir. And and again, that's a tributary, it's attributed to the dedication and hard work of of our staff, along with the support that we receive. So, as long as we keep the alignment on all that, it's only it's only going up from here, so we appreciate it.
And just echo that, just the fine work by 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 your staff. I'm just reflecting back on Firefighter Dusan and his report, staff report and analysis on the SCBAs. And obviously, very important to spend a little bit more money to make sure our firefighters are protected and can get in there and have have reliable equipment for the for the lifesaving issues, either a fire or anything that like that. Also, Captain Bustillos and her amazing report and and just being forward-thinking on the subscription plan and how to get more people involved in it, just grateful for those, just two examples. And I could probably go on and on about all the different hats that your your staff wears, but just two recent examples that came forward to to council. We really appreciate you being a leader that stretches your staff to be the best they can, and I think it does come come from the leadership, because I'd follow you up a hill. That's for sure. So, thank you.
I appreciate it, sir, but it is it's a team effort, for sure. If I didn't have the committed personnel, it just wouldn't matter. So, they make me look good, no doubt about it. So, appreciate all the kind words. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. So, from one chief to the other, Chief Perantos.
All right. Mine will be about an hour long.
Oh, good.
I hope not. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. I will be presenting the Sierra Madre Police Department's 2024 Annual Report. This past year, we have seen a reduction in overall crime, due in part to our department's proactive work and engagement with our community. We have focused on professional development, internal restructuring, traffic enforcement, risk management, and regional collaborations. We will continue to evolve through community support and organizational improvements. This is our organizational chart. The department is authorized for 23 sworn positions, not including part-time staff. That includes part-time dispatchers, part-time records clerks, part-time. That includes part-time dispatchers, part-time records clerks, part-time community service officers, et cetera. Currently, we are down one officer and one dispatcher. We have dispatcher candidates already in backgrounds and are currently recruiting, anticipating retirements and the open position that we currently have. Despite the staffing challenges, we have maintained operational effectiveness and continue to provide quality service. As you can see, we have restructured from administrative operations and investigations to administrative operations and support services, which better aligns with our department. Group A crimes. Group A crimes are classified by the Department of Justice and the FBI as the most serious crimes, which show an overall decline in Sierra Madre. Residential, commercial burglaries, as well as robberies are down. While there has been a slight increase in aggravated assaults, it is mostly related to domestic incidents. There is no major rise in crime or crime patterns of concern. Our continued presence, community partnerships are ensuring that we keep Sierra Madre safe. Group B crimes are classified as those less serious, often nuisance or quality of life issues like trespassing or loitering, which have dropped significantly. While weapon seizures have remained steady, we have seen a rise in mental illness calls for service, likely due to public and law enforcement awareness of mental health. Internet crimes against children.
Chief?
Yes?
May I ask about, I think it might be group A. So we had a, and it would be on the right-hand side. We had a rash of catalytic converter thefts. And I know we were part of TRAP now, I'm sure you're going to talk about TRAP.
I will.
Has that been, has it been because of TRAP? Or is that just that maybe, maybe I'm not hearing about them as much? Or is that type of theft not just occurring as much across the region?
It, so thank you for the question. So that type of crime is still occurring across the region. I think it's our proactive efforts coupled with our TRAP unit that has assisted us in many of the catalytic converter investigations, including vehicle theft, which I will later touch on. I think all that has contributed to the decrease. We haven't seen a pattern in 2024 of catalytic converter thefts compared to 2023.
It was bad. And I know we did some of the engraving events, I think that was also through TRAP. But I think those were fantastic efforts because that's very expensive for our residents when those types of things are happening, so we'll applaud you on that.
Overall, it would be the theft from vehicles. So we went from 14 in 2023 to 12. Slight decrease.
Thank you.
So internet crimes against children, we're part of LA County Regional Task Force. The cases have remained level 2023 compared to 2024, with the majority of them being unfounded after the investigation is complete. All right, detective investigations. Our detectives saw a slight decrease in reported crimes in 2024. That means overall reported crimes. Notably, felony arrests increased while misdemeanor arrests dropped. We also filed more felony cases compared to the previous year, and fewer cases were rejected by the district attorney's office. Even when cases were declined, it was typically due to lack of sufficient evidence.
And what was the increase in the felonies?
In the felonies, we went from, the arrests, we went from 10 to 15, 2023, 10 arrests, 15 in 2024. And as far as filings, we went from 3 in 2023 to 9 in 2024. Okay, traffic safety. Traffic-related calls and reports declined in 2024, which is common when enforcement increases. Our citations, traffic citations, rose from 582 in 2023 to 891 in 2024. However, non-injury and hit-and-run collisions saw an increase, which is unusual given the enforcement efforts. We will continue to focus on high visibility, education, and enforcement moving forward. We are supported by some state grants that help us target dangerous driving behaviors. We have the OTS Traffic Safety Grant, which the primary target is the five major collision factors. That's speed, we don't have traffic lights, traffic lights, left-hand turn, distracted driver being on your cell phone, rolling through stop signs, et cetera. We also have the CHP Cannabis Grant, which is related to DUI cannabis-related enforcement and education. And like a state of traffic safety, will continue to be one of our top priorities moving forward.
Is this where you would have any of your work around bicycle safety and scooter safety in the traffic safety area, or is that a separate thing?
No, I don't have the numbers for scooter enforcement or bike.
Okay, I'll ask a follow-up in a minute. Go ahead and continue on, chief.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned that, I don't know if you said there's a correlation, but I guess this is within your industry. Is it your understanding that when citations are higher, there is actually less collisions and things of that nature? Or is that, is that just happenstance in our report for this year?
That usually happens is when you have a higher amount of traffic enforcement, you get less traffic collisions. However, if you look at the chart, we have 46 or non-injury traffic collisions. The one that's a little more concerning are the non-injury hit-and-run. We went from 11 to 25 in 2024.
So I just wanted to see if you can set the record straight as far as traffic citations? That, because we see it all the time through our, when we talk about fee schedules and all that, right, how much actually comes back to the city as far as revenue is concerned? But you're not trying to make money for the city, but rather keep the citizens safe by doing traffic citations? Is that your policy and why you've increased it?
Thanks for the question, yes. We've always had a concern and we get a lot of, which I will talk on another slide. We get a lot of complaints regarding traffic speeding, rolling through the stop signs. And for public safety, absolutely. It has nothing to do with revenue whatsoever, or recap, or quotas. That's irrelevant here in Sierra Madre. It's about public safety and keeping our community safe.
Can I jump in? That is precisely what people have been asking for. So I'm really stunned that you've done as much as you've done, and I'm very pleased to see it. And I'm not surprised with the results. I just keep it going. You're doing great.
Thank you. Okay, department resource requests. Calls for service from our dispatch, which is kind of an anomaly, is down in 2024. It's about 5,000 less calls, likely due to a rise in officer initiative activity, which shows proactive policing. So if you could see, second to bottom, police initiated. Went from almost 3,000 to over 6,000 police initiated. That's probably. Dispatch calls for officer response increased with notable rises in mental illness and homeless-related calls. We respond to all homeless-related calls for service and provide resources. Even though we are not experiencing a chronic homeless problem, we do remain vigilant. And then on this same chart, parking, you could see parking complaints, slight increase. That's citizens complaining about parking downtown, overnight parking. We went from 232 complaints to 252. However, if you look over to the parking citations, 2023, we had 956. For 2024, there was 1,311 parking citations in Sierra Madre. So a significant increase of, which demonstrates our increased patrols and compliance efforts with parking. Okay, our involvement with Task Force for Regional Auto Theft Prevention, TRAP. What's the benefit of being in TRAP? It gives us a regional, well, first, regional expertise, investigative tools, and access to broader intelligence. If you could look at the chart, this task force is in the San Gabriel Valley. It's comprised of eight detectives, one of those detectives being from Sierra Madre. So it's an LA County Regional Task Force. Just the eight man team has had, in 2024, has had 59 arrests, recovered 529 vehicles. The value seized is almost $10 million. Chop shop investigations, eight. Firearms seized, 53. Cash seized, 602. Business inspections, and then search warrants, 67. Of the seven vehicle thefts that were listed earlier today in 2024, we have GTA's, what most people call GTA's, four were recovered through TRAP assistance. Four of them, four of the seven, that was our detective. These cases have revealed a broader criminal network. And as a result of that, the investigations are still ongoing. The partnership has enhanced our investigative capacity, gained specialized expertise, and extended our regional footprint.
And this is the eight cities in this area, right?
Correct. There's eight detectives assigned to that task force.
Eight detectives in the whole county or eight detectives in like the San Gabriel Valley?
San Gabriel Valley team. There's multiple teams throughout LA County.
Got it.
So our detective, Joe Lasciano, is assigned to the San Gabriel Valley team. Foothill Special Enforcement Unit, also known as SWAT. Through our partnership with Foothill Air, I'm sorry. We are part of the Foothill Special Enforcement Team, EFSET, or SWAT. There are benefits to being part of EFSET, which include access to highly-trained personnel, specialized equipment, tactical training, and a crisis negotiation team, including professional development and opportunities. EFSET had 20 activations in 2024, resulting in 18 violent offenders arrested. While we have not had an incident, thankfully, that required deployment in Sierra Madre, having access to trained personnel and professionals ensures we are ready to respond to any major event quickly and effectively. So if we had a major event here, I have access to three commanders, about four sergeants, and about 20-plus personnel from EFSET. So for example, a violent protest in our city, I can reach out to them and they can respond. Or we have a major incident with a barricaded suspect, I can use their support to handle that. So great benefit to it. Foothill Air Support Team, FAST. Through our partnership with Foothill Air Support Team, we contact, we contract helicopter services through Pasadena Police Department. They often arrive faster than patrol units and provide real-time information to the responding unit. These flights, support calls involving alarm calls here, burglaries, some bear calls when they're at schools, suspicious activity, crimes in progress, and missing persons. So I know recently we had a lot of calls coming in when the helicopters are flying in Sierra Madre. So if residents hear a helicopter overhead, it's likely assisting our department to prevent overloading on our dispatchers. Bear in mind that we usually issue a NICSIL alert to inform the community of the incident. So FAST assistance has increased if you compare 2023 to 2024. So there's about another 50 more calls for service that we have used their services.
And you said you let those know over NICSIL? I don't know that I've received a NICSIL alert on that.
We do.
Okay. Well, could you follow up on that?
So if a media helicopter's up there, you're not going to NICSIL that, right?
No, no, not at all, not media helicopter. Usually, we start getting flooded with calls from our citizens inquiring, and then we push a NICSIL out, informing them there's no concern. Please handling a matter, you know, use this alternative route, things of that nature. Bear calls for service. Okay, overall, bear-related calls are slightly down compared to 2023, but we have seen an increase. So we started tracking, if you recall, bear intrusions and attempt intrusions, which we now track. All bear activity is documented and reported monthly to California Fish, Department of Fish and Wildlife. If you look at the chart on the left, you'll see that our peak is April through September, or the busiest month for bear activity. And given the fires and the lack of food, it's unknown at this time, based on what James told me, that whether or not bear activity will increase. It's unknown. We will continue to educate our residents and respond to these calls to ensure both public safety and animal welfare. We also work closely with bear lovers of Sierra Madre to educate the public on living with bears. So the only part that's a little concerning is the bear attempt intrusions from 9 to 27. However, the intrusions have decreased significantly.
Chief, what's the numbers? I am trying to figure out the numbers because they don't seem to be squaring in my, like, you know, in April, you've got, in 2024, you've got 20, and in 2023, you've got eight. And they're about the same space on the graph. So I'm trying to understand what I'm seeing difference between those two lines.
Seeing them up there. Unless my chart came out a little wrong, but yeah, I think the lines. But I know the numbers are correct per month, so. So, yeah.
Which numbers are correct? Because one set of numbers has to be wrong.
So May for 2024, we have 51 versus May of 2023, we have 27. So I know the other numbers are kind of overlaid, so best way to look at this is we're, it's probably the layout on the PowerPoint, I apologize. But if you look at it, it's the, yeah, I know what you're saying. They're probably backwards the other way.
Well, not all of it. You're going down the other side, they're what you're saying. You know, August, we're, 2024 is 41, but in 2023, 67, so.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so sometimes with these graphs, there are two vertical axes. So you might have two scales, which is probably what's going on there, so.
Trust me, I'm not the expert at PowerPoint.
Your.
I apologize.
Your bear graphic, though, is really cool.
I got the numbers right, so we're down on bear calls for service.
Yeah, but it's, but we're down just a little bit on it is what this is showing. The graph makes it look like it's a big dip from 2024 between 2023, but the numbers, like you have on the right-hand side, it's down a little bit, but not down huge amounts.
Correct. It's been consistent, I would agree, from 2023 to 2024.
Okay.
Decrease in bear intrusions, however, the attempts is where we've seen an increase. That's usually smashed window, clawing through a window screen.
But not going in?
Correct.
So they're trying, but they're getting scared away before they actually go in?
Correct, and usually there's property damage.
Okay. And with bear intrusions, there is property damage as well. But intrusion is property damage, but no, would it be right to say intrusion is an external property damage? Attempt is external, an actual intrusion is external and internal?
That is correct.
Okay.
Unless a door is open. Then it would only be internal.
Yes, we've had that happen.
Yes. All right, risk management here is key in policing. It helps us reduce liability, identify training needs, and ensure transparency. It helps us reduce liability, identify training, needs and ensure transparency. Use of force incidents and vehicle pursuit rose slightly in 2024. With most pursuits, and actually it's all pursuits, were canceled for safety. So they were initiated and shortly thereafter, within seconds, they're all canceled. All citizen complaints are investigated. Those not involving misconduct result in an inquiry. So they start off as an inquiry and if we identify misconduct, then those, or there's an SB two issue, then those rise to an Internal Affairs investigation.
So when you say a pursuit is canceled, does that mean you let the person go or the person stops?
We let them go. So most of our pursuits here in the city are due to traffic violators that refuse to comply. So I think the risk factor for the city of Sierra Madre is too high. The risk versus the reward. You have a traffic violation only. Our policy says you can pursue. However, I don't think it's, it's wise to pursue a vehicle for a violation only. So the supervisors have clear instruction to cancel the pursuit if that's all you have.
Can I qualify that? So how are you defining pursuit by, by total rate of speed or?
So what? Pursuit is defined, so the failure to yield to a police vehicle. When you have a forward-facing light, the vehicle's clearly identified as a police vehicle and there's a siren. So if you turn on your full vehicle lights and sirens and the vehicle fails to yield, you give them an ample amount of time to pull over. If they don't, you put out what we call the P word, the pursuit word. That constitutes, so the moment you've activated everything and you use the P word, it is a pursuit that has to be reported at DMV. There's forms that has to be investigated to see whether it was with, within policy.
When you're actually chasing it.
Correct, correct. But it's, it's.
So what happened, do they just back off and not?
Correct. You completely terminate the pursuit. You take a crime report for failure to yield. Hopefully you got the full plate and then we investigate it further. I just think the risk is too high.
And so, so of those pursuits, and granted it's small, so we're, we're, we're burrowing in a little bit on this. But how many of those pursuits actually result in a, a ticket or a violation? Because if you've got the plate and they, they failed you to, to yield, that's, that's a, is that a felony at that point or is it?
So it all depends on the type of driving. All of our pursuits are very, very short. I can tell you from the three. One, a subject was not arrested. They had a, what they call a pocket bike. So the, we call them lawnmower bikes. So the small little motorcycles that don't have registration or VIN numbers, things of that nature. One involved that and that person abandoned, ran into a, a commercial property and abandoned the pocket bike. So that person was then apprehended. The other two.
And, and you confiscated the bike in that case?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. The other two were short pursuits. And you got, you got to remember, when they use that word, the pursuit word, it's a pursuit, it's, it's, it has to be documented as such. In some instances, we have them pull over shortly thereafter. And obviously they are cited for the twenty-eight-hundred-point-two, which is a misdemeanor. If you get reckless driving and you have to have multiple violations, then you could go the felony charge. It's a wobbler that they call. So you could go either way depending on, on the severity of their driving or their, their dangerous driving.
And then the, the Internal Affairs?
So the, the Internal Affairs, they look a little high. One was a assist through a trap. So another agency took the initial Internal Affairs complaint, personnel complaint, which we investigated. That complaint was unfounded. There are a few here that are due to a claim filed against a city. So anytime there's a claim filed where an officer is accused, for the sake of transparency, we're required through posts to investigate the claim to see if the officers violated the law, policy, procedure, or if they need additional training. And it's just to show a full transparent investigation, which is then provided to the attorneys from an, it's, it's almost like an internal review. And you're required to do that anytime a claim, whether it's one dollar or millions of dollars, you have to do it, you're required.
And it's an internal claim or a claim from, from the, the public?
It's, it's claimed from any?
Any claim. I guess I'm not for that.
So, so for example, one of the ones here is if it's SB two related. So for example, somebody says you pulled them over because they were Hispanic. Okay? That's a biased complaint. Even though we have body worn cameras and the body worn camera is going to completely refute the allegation, you didn't say anything, you know, you ran through the stop sign, period, or you were speeding. We're required through posts to complete a full IA investigation regarding the allegations. Within ten days, we have to submit a report to post because it's one of the nine Senate Bill Two rules that they have. And it has to be investigated within that year. So it's not concerning to me. There, there, there are none there that are of concern. So.
Okay.
All right. Organizational assessment and twenty-two, twenty-five goes. Okay. Law enforcement is much more than just responding to calls for service. Today's police work requires leadership, policy reform, professional development, mentoring and accountability at every level. It involves staying current with post certifications, adjusting to evolve, evolving legislation and embracing risk management to protect not only the public, our personnel and the city as a whole. This work is continuous and requires intentional leadership every single day. Okay? As you recall, we did an organizational assessment, I believe it was 2023, and a hundred and twenty-five recommendations were made. Seventy-nine of the one-twenty-five have already been completed. And the remainder are in various stages. We have several goals for 2025. I'm just going to touch on a few of them. The, the blue highlighted, I know they're a little different. No, I can see them nice and bright over here. I'm just going to touch on a few of them. Station infrastructure. And I think these are just the most important. We're working on revitalizing our police station, the, the interior appearance and kind of the layout to make greater use of our limited space. So we've been in contact with our new full. It's a little outdated flooring. We need flooring and painting. And then kind of reorganize. We've, we've, I have a cleanup committee. So we've put it in three stages where we're cleaning the station. Once items that need to be stored destroyed or they're going to be sent over to evidence, propertyevidence.com where we could sell it and, and, and bring revenue or minimal revenue on the sale of the item of those that are outdated. So that, that's one. Our mission, vision, values and motto. We just updated them this week. This was a ninety-day staff collaboration process. So we redefined who we are as an agency or an organization, why we serve and how we move forward organizationally and meet community expectations. So we kind of rebranded ourselves with everybody's input from the department. This is one that's dear to me, the Sierra Madre Citizen Academy. So if all goes well, it's scheduled to launch in May of this year. This academy will allow us to educate our residents on what we do in law enforcement, from investigation and tactics to our bike patrol, to our drone program, our EFSET and trap involvement. We will also include a training on NICSIL and Genesis, the importance in, in hopes that we get more subscriptions or people signing up for our NICSIL and our Genesis. And then lastly, we've created a field operations guide. This is a practical mobile tool, a quick reference resource for officers that they can use out in the field to guide them through both common and those anomaly-type incidents that we don't handle at, on a continuous basis. This will informed, a more informed decision-making by our officers. And then increase greater professionalism. So this slide represents what, like I said, where we are, where we are headed as an organization. And I do want to emphasize that police work is a multifaceted and complex and policing evolves every single day. I'm going to give you guys a quick demonstration of, it's a work in progress, so I apologize. Field operation guide, if you click on it. So that's what it's going to look like. You'll be able to open it on a computer or your phone. So go to the animals one right there. The reason it talks about it's work in progress. It'll have all what you're supposed to do, the real simple reader's digest of what you should do when you have a bear incident, who needs to be notified, what needs to be reported. So we have several calls there for service. Like for example, there's one in there, airplane crash. Well, what do we do? You know, you know FAA gets involved. LA County sheriffs are going to get involved. Who to call, phone numbers, who to, that type of thing. So it'll be an app, I'm not going to call it an app, it's not. But it is a work in progress. But this is what we're working on also right now. Hopefully it'll be completed in the next few months.
And this, this is before your, your team, your officers?
Yes. This is going to be for all the officers. We have a real young police department. And there are some of these calls, for example, barricaded suspect. When was the last time we had a barricaded suspect here? So it kind of guides you through the, the motions of notifications, what you should and shouldn't do. And this concludes my presentation. Any questions or anything?
Just one quick one. And I didn't know where to fit it in here. Up until recently, there had been some cases of people, thieves putting cameras in people's bushes to watch homes. I didn't hear of anything in our town, but I know they caught them in Arcadia. Are you, is this still a thing or is this? You know what I'm talking about?
I am, thank you for the question. Yes, I'm very familiar with it. So no, it has not happened in Sierra Madre. We haven't had one incident. Our residential burglars are way down compared to the year prior. You know, when you look at criminal enterprises or criminal organizations out there, you have to stay on top of them. They change their modus operandi continuously. So for example, you know, the knock-knock burglars, that was the thing. Then they went to the cameras, you know, catalytic converters were the thing. You know, now, you know, we're seeing, not here in the city, increase in, in vehicles being stolen. So just the crime trends change. So no, we're not experiencing anything. There's really no crime trend or pattern or any concern. We are a very, very, very safe city. I can assure you that.
Thanks, Chief. So kind of going back to the bears and yes, dovetailing with, with the bear lovers and the efforts that they're doing. As they stated, the bears are going to start, they don't go into full hibernation. I think it's called hyperphasia or something. They'll, they will start waking up. Are we still submitting all the data to Fish and Wildlife? And do we still have that good relationship that we developed over the past year and a half with Fish and Wildlife as we contemplate more, more bear sightings?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we report to them all of our stats the first day of every month. So we give them everything from photographs to any cat events or actual calls where there was an entry intrusion, attempts. Yes, we provide them every thirty days. And yes, we have a very strong and good working relationship with them.
My, my fear is that just thinking about, you know, our, our normal human psyche, we're, we're going to, a lot of our residents are going to get fatigued on calling. I know even, I even do that with when I see water leaks. So somebody else probably called that one in, things like that. Are we, are we going to ramp up our efforts? And I bring this up because I know thankfully we have organizations like Bear Lovers of Sierra Madre that are helping. But to, just to keep reminding residents, we need to keep our bears wild to keep them alive and safe. Therefore, it's best practice to call whenever we see and/or there's some type of event with a bear. Are we, are we continuing that through our, our education with the PD and, and other, other places?
Thank you for the question. Yes, if they, if they see a bear or they're concerned about a bear, yes, absolutely, call us. We'll, we will respond to every single call, make the assessment, try to redirect the bear back into the foothills if we can.
And I know, you know, our, our dispatchers take a lot, it'd be thirty thousand calls a year, over thirty thousand calls. That's, that's a high volume. We're educating, because I, I did hear a couple complaints from residents that, you know, this is maybe a year ago over that, like, there's nothing we could really do. And are we educating our dispatchers, the people answering the phone on how to, how to kind of have a little bit of customer service and respond to those types of questions or, or concerns?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We do. Matter of fact, I just had training or counseling, you could call it, recently with the dispatchers regarding my expectations.
And they do a phenomenal job. And I, I can't even, I can't even contemplate like what that job entails and how stressful it is to hear, oh, you just saw a bear and somebody's, you know, in an emergency. You know, I can, I get it, but I want to make sure that our, our training is high standard. Because I know that's important to you.
Yes, it is.
Team manager.
If, if I may add, we're also working on, on three additional initiatives. Working with our mayor, we're going to have a working group with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments where they're going to host a workshop. Our goal is to get Foothill mayors and city managers together to talk about wildlife, bears and what we can do as a region to, to drive bears back into the wild and out of our neighborhoods. So that's number one. Assembly member Harabedian is also working on creating legislation to guarantee funding for wildlife conflict managers through Fish and Wildlife so that we can have guaranteed funding for those positions. And number three, we, we have a communications coordinator now and we're moving into the time when bears are going to become more active. So residents can expect to see more infographics on social media related to bears and what to expect over the next few months.
It's good news. Thank you.
Very good news.
Two, two quick questions. On, on your organizational assessment, there was one of the, the bubbles that was LEFTA? L-E-F-T-A, what is that?
That, thank you for the question. So that's one we, we started rolling out in 2023. It's fully rolled out. It's the paperless management system. So all internal affairs are done paperless in the system. All inquiries are done. Now evaluation, so when we complete an evaluation, it's approved. It'll go to the assistant city manager for approval via the, the database, paperless.
Right.
Also do commendations, it tracks equipment, training through post. So it's got all these uses of force pursuits. And it also is set on a threshold of risk concerns. So let's say hypothetically, I have an officer that, that same officer is involved in multiple uses of force. It'll trigger an alert.
So it's, it's not only a paperwork system, but a review system as well?
Yes.
Fantastic. The other one I'm going to count, I'm going to channel Mayor Protem Lowe and her concern around bicycle safety and scooter safety in, in the city. What are, can you tell us a little bit about your initiatives that you're doing around that?
So we have been pushing the, the traffic enforcement for the scooters. I did send out an email. I have drove around the city. I haven't seen a whole lot of it myself. I think it goes in little spurts. It's mostly around six-eleven east. Um, it's mostly around 611 East, uh, where we see our scooters, but they've been out there enforcing scooter safety, traffic safety, because that has to do with traffic.
Right.
And unfortunately, we haven't been successful in, in achieving that.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I know that, that there was, I think it was in Glendale, someone was hit on a scooter that, uh, and, and, uh, and died from that, and so I know that it's particularly important to her, so anything you can do to kind of help with that education of folks and recognize it's, you know, the timing on it is hard, but I appreciate the, the, the traffic, uh, support on those things.
If I can, really quick, we did send out Officer Garcia to our schools to talk about scooter safety and skateboard safety. We did do that.
Oh, good.
However, we haven't been successful with citations.
Okay.
So...
Good. Did you do both the elementary and middle?
Yes.
Great.
And then we don't have a tracking system to track contacts for, let's say, education if they do a stop to a scooter.
That used to be a problem in Kirsten Court. I haven't heard about that in quite a long time, so...
I have not either, but it was brought to my attention. I did send out an email, um, informing the whole department, uh, to address the issue, and in addition to that, we sent, uh, Officer Jason Garcia to the schools to educate.
Thank you very much. Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Great report, Chief. Great report, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank your staff too, please.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Um, what are your guys' thoughts? Do we want to try to get through consent, um, or do we want to, uh, take a break? It's starting to go a little long.
Let's nail consent.
Nail consent.
Do it. All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the, uh, items by title only?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are five items for consideration by the City Council this evening. Consent item A is a consideration of Resolution 25-19, approving certain demands. It is staff's recommendation that the City Council approve and adopt Resolution Number 25-19. Consent item B is the consideration of award of general contractor services contract, and this is to Taylor Tennis Courts for the 2025 Sierra Vista Pickleball Conversion Project, uh, for an, an amount not to exceed $133,866, and it is, it's staff's recommendation that the City Council approve the award of the agreement to Ta- uh, Taylor Tennis Courts. Consent item C is the consideration of award of professional architectural and engineering services for restoration and renovation projects. This is for Lizzie's Trail Inn and the Richardson Historical Museum contract to TSK Architects in an amount not to exceed $77,500. It is staff's recommendation that the City Council approve this, uh, contract. Consent item D is the General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report. It's recommended that the City Council accept, receive, and direct staff to file the General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Reports with the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research. And lastly, consent item E is the consideration to amend the 2024, the fiscal year 2024/2025 capital improvement budget for the Public Works Department, Department Equipment Upgrade. This is a recommendation from city staff to approve the budget amendment and to reallocate and increase the capital improvement fund by $34,899.51. Mr. Mayor, um, members of the City Council, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right. Um, do we have any questions on, uh, item A? Item B? Item C?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I don't know if this is for our Director of Finance, or probably our City Manager can answer it, but, um, as I recall, we had funding within our budget for the 23, 24 fiscal year for the repairs at Lizzie's and Richardson, um, and those hadn't happened yet. I just want to make sure that, because it was budgeted, um, did, did it continue to be, become budget? Was it still in the budget, or what, what happened with those funds? And, um, second question, I know it's two questions. Uh, second question is, as far as, it's great that it's grant money, but is this grant money that we're able to get because we're requesting it, or is this grant money that we already had in our coffers for, for the TSK, uh, potential approval of TSK, um, bid?
So I, I think I can answer both questions. Thank you for the questions, Councilmember Garcia. So we did carry over the budget, um, and I believe it was originally $80,000 that was allocated, uh, to both museums. Um, what we found out is that, uh, there are going to be, uh, architecture and engineering services that are going to be required in order for us to, to, to do those repairs. So this is the first step. Um, those funds were carried over from last budget to this budget year, uh, in anticipation of this work. Uh, number two is, um, we were able to identify additional grant funds that we're going to use in addition to the, the money that was allocated, the $80,000, uh, for the repairs, and, and that is new funding that was, uh, secured, uh, by our Community Services Manager, Ted Taggart.
So if I can do...
No, go ahead.
If I can do a follow-up on that, so the 77,500 is for the architecture, and then the California State Parks, um, State, California State Department of Grants and Local Services, or the O.G.A.L.s, for 184, that's on top of the 77, is that right?
I believe that is correct, and I would, and, and for that, to verify that, I'd like to bring up either our, uh, Public Works or Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, yes, sir, that is correct, sir.
Okay, so we did, we, there's two funding pots, so we've got the 77 and then the 184.
That is correct.
Wonderful.
Now, one follow-up. So, um, we know, we know with Lizzie's, it's the roof, with Richardson, um, it's that back room where, um, we, we jokingly say we hope that still is going to be operational for, um, delicious Sierra Madre whiskey. Um, but I don't know that we ever got an update on that, like, third room or the, the part that was probably not historical, it was added after the fact, um, whether or not that's going to be demolished, or, um, have we, have we made a decision on that, or are we, are we waiting?
I thought the back room was the, still...
No, there's, there's a back room that's part of the original structure, and then there's a further back room that's kind of more like a porch, um, and I think that was not historic, but are we, is that going to be demolished, or? You, you correct me if I'm, if the mayor's right and I'm wrong.
Actually, sir, uh, both of you are right.
So, so... It's very, it's very political for you to say that.
Both of you are correct. Gentlemen, uh, there are two rooms in, in the rear of the structure. Uh, both rooms will be saved.
Okay.
Yes, uh, TSK's, um, expert, their, their historical architect, uh, is, is able to save and include the, uh, the last room to the rear, to be included in, in the design.
Okay.
Yes.
So, yeah, I don't think we got an update on that, so I'm, I'm happy to hear. Either way, I just, I just was curious, um, if we were able to keep that for the historical, um, society. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Great. All right. Item D, any questions? I had a question on, on item D. So is it, it, my understanding in reading the, the housing element, that most of our, uh, work towards the housing element was, was through ADUs, is that correct?
That is correct, and I'd like to invite our Planning Director Lynn up for, uh, for more detailed, uh, response, but yes, that is correct.
So, so I'll...
I'll, I'll, I'll take that back. Um, you said for ADUs?
So, so, so let me, let me ask it as, as a two-part question. So most of our progress is, has, in, in this reporting period, had, it was due to ADUs, but in arena numbers, we've got a whole bunch of different categories, and so I'm just curious, you know, what our, our, our strategies are and what our concerns are about trying to meet, and we spend a lot of time, you guys spend huge amounts of time putting that, that together, um, and I just want to make sure that, um, you know, when it comes down to it, that it, we don't end up, you know, we want to support you in this, we don't end up in, in a, in a more difficult situation. So can you tell me a little bit about what you're doing, uh, to try to meet those arena numbers?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. Um, so for arena numbers, there are four different categories. There's above, moderate, moderate, below moderate, and the very low. So we have been accomplishing, um, fulfilling the very low, um, number with ADUs. We have been, um, streamlining the application. Also, we are developing the pre-approved plans with, um, COG to expedite the production of ADU. In terms of above moderate income, um, numbers, those will be fulfilled by, um, market rate development and the upcoming metals development. So the one that, um, we're a little bit behind are the moderate income development, and those in our housing element, we do have program for lot consolidation, density bonus, um, other programs that we have already implemented in our housing element, um, hoping that there are interested property owners that will utilize those programs and create moderate housing income.
Now, you said that we were meeting the very low with the, um, ADUs, but the way I read it is the units to date are zero on the very low, and we need 79. Am I reading the wrong? This is on page four of the staff report.
So ADU are, uh, meeting the below market rate, so it's the mod- um, below moderate.
It's the low?
Yeah, low, not the very low.
So you've, you've been a wolf there that, that you may be able to phone a friend.
Yes. I can have him explain, but, um...
Great.
The very low, um, the very low income, that category, we have not been able to fulfill since the last housing element.
And that's the ones that we're trying to do with the lot consolid- wait, no, so you said the lot consolidations was for the moderate, but not for the very low? Okay. So are, are, what are we doing around very low?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. Um, so yes, we, we have certain programs in place, and you can see those programs in Appendix A of the General Plan Progress Report. Um, some of those programs include, uh, additional density bonuses for certain development. That goes hand in hand with the lot consolidation program. Lot consolidation allows for higher density at, at larger lots, and the density bonus incentivizes, uh, affordable housing through higher density allotment. Uh, so we, we include those, and we also have programs that, uh, include outreach to, uh, certain low-income housing developers. Um, that, that still hasn't taken place yet, and it's still within our plan to, to accomplish within the cycle.
So that's like the Section 8, uh, outreach that you've got in Number 10 of the housing program?
Yeah, that would be a good example.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Did you have a...
Yeah, I, I, just to follow up, and, you know, I've been on the council for over four years now, I think, and, um, one of the first things we, that I had to get involved in, um, was the housing element and, in the, in the arena numbers. Um, but we know a lot of this is market-driven, so I just want to make sure, I, even, even I don't fully understand the housing element and the arena numbers all the time, but as long as we have policies in place that are encouraging or open for like the 79 units, we're going to be okay. They might add on top of this with the next cycle, but I just want to make sure that if the market decides they're, they don't want to build any very low here in town, but we have policies that allow for it, are, we're going to be okay in the next cycle?
Yeah, my understanding is that as long as we've made every effort to implement our housing element, and we've made every effort to allow those private developers to come in and, and develop where we have planned for, uh, that, that shouldn't not be a pen, uh, penalty against us from the Housing and Community Development Department. Um, I can also defer to our city attorney here to say what penalties could incur or might incur, or...
Of the tab.
Yeah, okay. That, that was my understanding. I wanted to make sure, and because this is a complex issue, we thank the Planning Preservation Department for all the hard work on this, but that was my understanding, I just wanted to confirm that.
And I appreciate that question, because that's a help to, to reframe it, so thank you very much. All right, so that is item D. So then, any questions on item E? Great. We'll now open the consent agenda up to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any items for public comment for the items on the consent agenda?
We do. Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker card submitted from Susan Gallagher.
Ms. Gallagher?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Susan Gallagher, 461 Sunnyside, uh, North Sunnyside, and I'm also a member of the, uh, Library Board of Trustees with experience with TSK Architects associated with the library renovation, and I am on the Board of Directors for the Sierra Madre Historical and Preservation Society. And with that, I just wanted to express that I do support a vote to grant TSK Architects the contract related to the, um, renovation at Livy- Lizzie's, uh, Trail Inn and Richardson House. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Madam Clerk, do we have any other public comment?
There are no other speaker cards. Mr. Mayor?
Any further discussion from the council?
I just have one question. I know it's not a discussion, discussion, Mr. Mayor, but going back to, um, item B, uh, when I look at the one-page contract, um, on the back of the staff report, it says convert two tennis to eight pickleball. I, I thought we didn't have room there, and it was going to be two tennis to four pickleball, and just want to make sure I have a correct understanding there, and we're okay there. Because we wanted to host tournaments potentially and things, so they need a certain amount of room.
Right, right.
It's what I heard, but that's not what the contract says.
Yes, sir. Excellent question. That is correct. Uh, after a deep dive into the math, uh, this area, square footage, uh, there is room.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is, uh, has been, uh, second by, uh, Taylor Tennis Courts, who specializes in the, in conversions, along with, uh, further research that was conducted and feedback from neighboring cities, who took on the same projects.
So we get eight courts in there instead of four. Wow.
That's correct.
That's great news.
That is really good news. That's a good question. Excellent. All right.
Thank you.
Any further council discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to know more about the front-end loader, just because I'm, I like this big... I'm not going to take up valuable time.
Are you going to ask if you can drive it?
Yeah. I would love that. I'd love that. Now, it's exciting to get a new one, we probably need it, I'm sure.
Yes, sir. If, uh, you or any other members of the City Council have a Class B license, you're very welcome to, uh, come over to the city yard and, uh, see what we can do, sir.
Thank you for the offer, but...
Can you make one electric for us?
I, 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 I'm not saying no. I'm not saying no, but everything is possible. Everything's possible.
In time. In time. Excellent. Thank you. All right, um, I think we're, we're at a point where we'll take a, a motion for, uh, the, the consent agenda?
I'll do that.
All right. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Why don't we take a eight-minute, we'll reconvene it at, at 45 after? Why don't we take a eight-minute, we'll reconvene it at forty-five after.
The planning commission has considered this ordinance on two separate occasions. They last considered it at last Thursday's meeting and recommended this version for your consideration and approval. Uh ordinances, as you know, generally require two separate readings. This is not your usual ordinance. This is an urgency ordinance. And it requires uh it requires unanimously, because not all of you are present. It requires you all to approve this unanimously um.
Unanimous on the the members present?
Of the members present, correct. And it takes effect immediately, uh like like a resolution. So unlike an ordinance that where there's two readings and it takes effect three days thereafter. Uh if adopted today, this would take effect immediately. It's going to be uncodified, which means that it's not going to be published on our in our municipal code online. This is gonna remain with the city clerk. We're gonna contact all the property owners that have been impacted and let them know that these procedures are available to them. Uh and yeah, in the staff report here, it says it's set to expire automatically after three years. That should say five years. That was amended by the uh planning commission. Scroll further down. This is going to apply to every single property owner in the city. That has a red tag, meaning it's uh the the property can't be occupied. Or a yellow tag, meaning a portion of it can't be occupied for the five-year term. And only for those property owners that received one of those tags because of damage caused by either the Eaton fire or subsequent debris flow. As part of this ordinance, we're also requesting that the city council declare shelter crisis. Uh this is probably the first time that Sierra Madre's ever declared a shelter crisis. It's it's an uncommon procedure, but the reason we're requesting it is because it allows the city council to get around certain building code provisions. Um that exist i- if the so long as the crisis is in effect. And the reason for this is currently we are allowed to get around certain building code provisions as a result of the governor's executive orders. But those will expire. Either he's going to rescind them or they're gonna expire automatically uh because a lot of those orders are set for three years. And this ordinance has a five-year term. So to make sure that the city is covered through the remaining two years, we're gonna need a shelter crisis declaration. Otherwise, some of those provisions in this ordinance that are contrary to the building code will be avoided once the governor's order expires. Uh now I'm gonna break up this conversation to three parts. First is the removing the debris. The second is the subdivision and planning phase, the entitlements. And the last one is the post entitlement, so the actual building permits. So in terms of removing the debris, uh as you remember, this body contracted with uh Los Angeles County to administer the debris removal process. Uh that's gonna be spearheaded by the US Army Corps of Engineers. A property owner needs to opt into that program in order for the debris to be removed, and we have property owners in the city that have opted out. We have at least, to my knowledge, three parcels that have opted out of the debris removal program. So we need to create an alternative for these individuals. The alternative is our existing demolition permit process slightly modified. If you don't mind scrolling down. We're proposing suspending the portion of demolition permit process uh that's discretionary, so there won't be any discretionary reviews, gonna be handled all at the staff level. Uh and there won't be any type of historic analysis associated with this uh demolition. Scroll further down. We are going to require that all property owners who have debris um eat post Eaton fire debris on their property will need to remove that debris within six months of this ordinance. Uh so I apologize. They need to apply for a demolition permit within six months of this ordinance. And then after they've applied to it, they need to remove that debris within six months of issuance of a demolition permit. So within a year, they should remove, they should have all that debris removed. And that aligns with what LA County uh anticipates debris removal to be using their uh if if a property owner to opt in, LA County expects that all debris will be removed by the end of the year, I believe. So we're trying to align both timelines.
You answered my question just now.
Scrolling further down. We anticipate that this will result in removing the discretionary demolition process and the historical analysis. Uh property owners uh will still have to pay two hundred eighty-four dollars, but they won't have to pay the the otherwise the the three thousand six hundred thirty dollars they would have to pay if the discretionary demolition uh permit process as written our municipal code is in place. Okay, now moving over to the uh entitlement process.
Do we need to do any coordination with the removal? Like if if any of these are in the canyon area? Yeah, we've got lots of trucks going up and down. Are there um access issues that we need to? Is that part of the the permit process?
I'll I'll let the individual who is going to be issuing the permits answer that question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Parkinson. I have already informed the county and the Army Corps of two specific locations that are going to be quite difficult. Um one is the is the Nature Friends structure. Because there's gonna be ongoing maintenance of that area by by the city and its contractors. Also, there are two properties on Churchill, which are on the main thoroughfare for LA County's efforts to maintain the Sierra Madre Dam. Um so both of them are aware of the logistics of traffic. And then also with Nature Friends, just the um the layout of what where they will be working. The steepness and the and the narrowness of that area. So those are the two. There's also one structure on Mount Wilson Trail Road I've mentioned. Um and but the other two in the canyon areas are the ones that I've really talked to them about already.
Fantastic. And when you say that the city work, that's the the Yucca Trail?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, uh continuing on with the entitlement process, as you know, there are two types of design review. The full discretionary design review by the planning commission and ministerial design review by staff. This is going to waive all design review. In the absence of design review, what happens is staff is going to just have a checklist to confirm, do they does the applicant meet all of the development standards. And if they meet all development standards, the development can proceed regardless of design. If you scroll a little further down. So we're calling out specific sections of the municipal code related to design review for the respective zoning districts. And suspending them for the for the term of the ordinance. Scroll further down. Uh now, on this point, this we are because we know uh we there may need to be a little bit of variation between these designs, especially to accommodate uh certain safety issues, like let's say if a property owner uh if a property is too close uh to the setback, it needs to be setback a little further. Uh we wanna accommodate some kind of variance there. So this ordinance contemplates a ten percent variance in development standards beyond the uh what the prior development was. And by prior, I mean pre by pre-January seventh. Uh and that applies to the all the so as written, it applies to all development standards. We're gonna call out specific ones. A ten percent for that means ten percent on setbacks, ten percent on height, ten percent on square footage, lock coverage, all of it. Scroll further down. Oh, sorry, a little further up. One one more sentence up, yep. Uh while ministerial review is encouraged, planning staff will reserve discretion to refer applications to the planning commission for design review. That was added by the planning commission. Uh just in case some property proposes some wild design, uh planning staff has the discretion to refer that to the planning commission. Now, with respect to square footage, uh we have we have two standards. They can either avail themselves of the ten percent variance standard or they can get up to two hundred fifty square feet in extra floor area. Uh and I believe the way that was determined was it looked at the average square footage of homes in the area and determined that two hundred fifty square feet was uh was the average to if you'd like if uh if senior planner Wolf would like to come up and explain how they he came up with that number. But just to compare, our neighboring city Pasadena is also using this ten percent standard and they're using two two hundred square feet. So um and LA County is doing something similar.
Yes, so thank you, City Attorney. Uh just to preface this, um the county has been organizing task force meetings with multiple cities, so we've been coordinating very closely with the city Pasadena. And um this provision is due in part in thanks to the de- uh deputy director of planning at city of Pasadena. The minimum allotment of two hundred fifty square feet. Uh in in certain cases where the home was maybe eight hundred square feet, ten percent of that would only have been eighty square feet. So that just didn't seem fair in in the eyes of the planners. So we implemented this minimum square footage based on ten percent, the average home size of those homes that were destroyed.
Uh with respect to height, like I said, they can uh avail themselves of the ten percent standard. However, if they did not have a second story prior to this Eaton fire, they will not be permitted to build a second story this time around. For those homes that do have a second story, however, they can expand the square footage of their second story by ten percent.
Mr. City Attorney, so let's say um I don't know if this is the 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 case or not, but let's say um somebody had preliminary plans and had an architect looking to build a second story and then go through the regular process. Do is the regular process still available to one of these residents if they, let's say they wanted to add a second story and?
Yes, so if if any property owner wants to exceed the standards articulated under this ordinance, they can always avail themselves of our municipal code. Scroll down. Uh estimated cost savings to the applicant, of course, there will be some nominal cost for staff reviewing the applications. Uh but really, they're saving something like eight thousand dollars in design review expenses. Uh and that's and that's depending on the zone. If you're in the hillside management zone, you're saving something like twelve thousand dollars. Scroll further down. Uh state law and our municipal code prohibit the construction of ADUs before primary uh dwellings. You can either build them at the same time or you can build the ADU after you build your home, the the primary dwelling, but you can't build the ADU before the primary dwelling. We're proposing suspending that provision, consistent with the governor's executive order as well. So now someone can build an ADU first. It's cheaper, it's faster, and then they can worry about uh building the primary afterward. Scroll further down. Uh permitting temporary storage of trailers. Our code currently prohibits individuals from having trailers on their homes and living in them. Uh this ordinance will allow it. Subject to the property owner entering into some kind of agreement with the city that's going to make sure that that property owner connects to city utilities and maintains that trailer and the property um in in an appropriate condition. Scroll further down. Do you have a question, Mayor?
Yeah, I think this is where it is, yeah. Yeah. Um so if you go scroll up just a little bit, um and you have the uh suspending section seventeen thirty-two twenty, parking of recre- recreational vehicles and boats. So do we need to clarify that it's just recreational vehicles? I mean, it it I I do we need to 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 be get that specific about it? We don't want people parking boats there and saying, well, you've suspended this, I can park my boat here.
With the intention of living in it? I think cuz that's the
Yeah.
Yeah, I it's up to the council if you wanna narrow that. I I don't suspect people will be living in their boats. But if you if you want, if you don't want to see that, then yes.
But they might wanna park their boat, they've got no other place to put it. Facing all kinds of expenses and stresses.
Correct.
You know, maybe they can't afford to rent this the the storage place where they usually put them.
So if if you want to prohibit that, you you can. Well, but we're suspending it that section, tho- those sub paragraphs in their entirety.
Oh, I I'm not suggesting that. I'm 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 not ar- arguing, I'm just throwing the question out there. I mean, it seems like there might be an advantage to allow them to have the boat there.
And is this is only for the thirty-five structures that we're talking about?
Correct, only those impacted by the Eaton fire that were that have a red tag or a yellow tag.
Yeah, so it's twenty-two and seven, I thought.
That was twenty-seven and eight.
Uh I'll I'll defer to the uh uh senior analyst Carlson.
Yeah, I think that's what was in the staff report, but it's uh important to remember that this is gonna apply to any possible damaged properties for um mudslides and debris flows too, going forward.
Right, right.
Not a finite number.
And is that code that the mayor just referenced only specific to residential canyon, correct?
I didn't I didn't notice.
We'd have to scroll up to see what the I didn't hear the code section either.
Oh, I see what you mean. That's the the so so well, there's there's it's, yeah, so it's in the canyon. And so there there's actually kind of a bigger question on 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 the canyon. That was the next question of like, how do we make sure that that we balance the the parking and placement of of trailers, RVs, things of that nature with the public safety vehicles to navigate? Like if we're waiving this, is there still some discretionary review to make sure we're we're thinking through that the safety of all the residents in the area?
Well, we do have the improvement agreement that they'll have to enter into. And that improvement agreement's gonna contemplate, obviously, safety and public utilities. And if they can't connect or if they can't place that into some safe configuration, we're not gonna execute that agreement with them.
Okay, so so if they wanna place one of these, like a a a trailer or an RV or something on the on the the lot, they have to be able to safely connect to sewer, water, electricity
Right.
and and do so in a way that doesn't uh impede uh public safety vehicles.
Yeah, if if like I'm just hypothetically, let's say there's a water flow issue. Um somehow it's going to impede the flow or cause water to have some kind of cross lot drainage. Then we wouldn't allow that configuration on the of that trailer in that specific location, for example.
Okay.
And this isn't suspending any parking restrictions um on the public right of way. This is for private property.
This is for private property. Let's scroll further down. Uh waiving cost of historic preservation. Uh a lot of these prop- some of these properties have been completely destroyed, uh others have are have been significantly damaged. Um we are proposing, or the planning commission and staff are proposing, suspending any kind of historic resource evaluation for any of these properties. And instead, and this is for the city council's consideration. Uh we have we have two options uh that you might consider. The first is doing some kind of historical resources evaluation for all properties impacted by the Eaton fire. And the purpose of that would be to document the Eaton fire's impact on the city of Sierra Madre, so it'd be kind of a historical document. Alternatively, you can limit that to only those properties that would uh be um that the historical resources uh ordinance would even apply to. So only those properties that are seventy-five years or older or already designated as historic limited to those properties and analyze whether or not we need to have some kind of historic preservation for them. It it's it's something you can um discuss, but if if the if the options aren't clear, or or do nothing. Or you can not have any kind of historic resource evaluation at all and forego that cost.
The the seventy-five uh years, how many of the the units were seventy-five years or older, do we know?
I defer to planning, we do know.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but off the top of my head, I do believe it's about twenty-four.
Okay.
And that number would be further narrowed down. Uh I was uh talking with the consultant and they would like to narrow that number down further to determine which ones are potentially historic based on historic imagery.
And and okay, but if it's completely destroyed, then what do you have to do? Do you have to rebuild with similar materials or similar style? What and tell me a little bit, help me understand some of this this historic designation requirements.
So that that's not a requirement I would support. Uh but what we would wanna do is simply just document what was there and at least have that on a record to to indicate some kind of historic presence at one point.
Okay.
May result in a plaque.
And and hi- historic is seventy-five year, so you said seventy-five years or historic. Now, other than mills, what are the other historic designations?
Well, mills is not a historic designation. The mills contract is is the is the contract you enter into after you had a historical designation.
I said, oh, that's right, we've got homes that are historic designation that aren't not mills.
But you but you but you may be eligible for historic designation if your property is seventy-five years or older.
Okay, so it's so there's 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 three layers then. Seventy-five years, historic, mills.
Two, two layers. Either your property is historic because of its age or some other qualifying criteria. And if you become historic, then you can apply for a mills act contract.
So there can be other criteria that that makes it historic if it's not seventy-five years old.
Right, architecture, cultural relevance.
Got it, like the Wisteria House, I don't know that that is seventy-five years old and that's cultural relev- relevance.
Right, right.
Okay.
We, I believe, um senior planner Wolf also reached out to the consultant and he offered a discount.
Ten to fifteen percent per property that would be analyzed, yes. So twen- ten to fifteen percent off that fifteen thirty figure.
All right, scrolling further down.
Uh so so I'd still, I'm sorry, I'm hung up on this historic. So so they do if the the building is is gone and and we're doing the historic evaluation. Why, so it it's just to document what was there, is that right? I can see like if you're if you're going to do a a renovation of a home or if you're going to, you know, as a part of the real estate transaction of selling a home, I could see the historic designation. I'm just I'm trying to understand a historic a historic review on something that's been destroyed or severely damaged.
So there are two criteria that can qualify a property as historic, and one of those is architecture, which in these cases don't apply. But the other is cultural, and that's when the property was occupied by a person of significance in the past. For example, the first mayor of Sierra Madre, that property has already been deemed historic.
And and it may result in like a a plaque, but we we wouldn't require the property to be rebuilt
Right.
pursuant to the historic.
It's fifteen hundred dollars per property to go and and do the research to figure out if if a former mayor lived there.
Something to consider. It's for the it's for the city council to consider. Uh and we didn't get into this level of detail with the planning commission on this specific issue, so it's something for you to consider.
Okay. If if I may, the other point I'd like to raise is that one, these properties are reconstructed. There won't likely be another opportunity to do any kind of historic research for another fifty to seventy-five years, once it's built.
Okay. Um so that brings up another question. So what what addition of the building code are we buil- are rebuilding these to?
They would be built to the current building codes.
It is the current building code, okay. Cuz I I'd heard that some cities were were going to do rollbacks to previous. But so this means that they would have to be solar and all electric or electric uh and E- electric EV and all of that with the the states required?
So there's there's a two-part answer to this. The first is that uh there is provisions in this ordinance to allow certain homes to be rebuilt under prior codes, but that's if they were already built under those prior codes. So this is something that would be like a new home. We actually have, I think, one case where there's an approved plan for uh construction. It was never executed, but that can now be renewed into and be constructed and executed by. Uh the second part of that question, uh I'm sorry, could you restate your question?
So you know, like the the current building codes are 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 pretty strict, right? And and we've got some people that have lost everything in a fire, so I wanna be very thoughtful of it. And so the current ones require solar and, you know, lots of of electrical upgrades and sprinklers, thank you, yes, that's an even better one. Um so I'm just trying to think through, like I've heard some cities are saying, we're gonna going to go back you know, a couple of years on the building codes to to give these people a break because they've lost everything, and now they have to rebuild with something with a very high standard.
So yes, where where it could apply, we will allow the rollback to those codes. It goes as far back as twenty nineteen codes.
Okay.
But to those other ones that don't have the eligibility to do that, they'll have to build to twenty twenty-two codes. Now, LA County and the task force have been trying to uh appeal to the governor to waive the requirement for solar for for these projects that weren't built originally with solar panels. Uh but we haven't heard a response as far as I know at this time.
Okay. I I will say, though, with the shelter crisis declaration, you have more options on the table. You can begin considering things in the building code um that you wouldn't ordinarily be able to consider in the absence of a shelter crisis declaration. Uh the next point here is waiving certain public improvements as a condition of redevelopment. Uh it's our standard practice uh to include conditions of approval in all developments and to require those properties that don't have curb and gutter to install curb and gutter. Um that's an expense, that's a generally an expensive proposition, and we're proposing waiving that for all those properties that already that didn't have curb and gutter uh prior to the fire.
It did not.
That did not. So if they did, they'd have to, you know, replace it if if it was.
So if the the curb and gutter is um if the cur- curb and gutter is is part of the public right of way, like the 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 city technically owns that, is that something that could fall under potential funding from the our lawsuit with Edison?
Well, we we own the right of way, but we don't maintain it. The property owner maintains that.
We have a sidewalk plan and we've gone and done sidewalk and we've repaired, you know, we've had like a strategic sidewalk repair in many areas of the city. And we've repaired the sidewalks, so we've spent city money to do that. So if we're having the the home built and it had a sidewalk.
If I if I may, Mayor.
You see, you see, I do you see where I'm going?
Yeah, but that's why I wanted to interject a little bit here. In zero cases that we're looking at, does the home have a sidewalk?
Okay.
In only two cases is there even a curb and gutter. So it's a pretty unique situation where we have the ability to let these people know, we're not gonna make you put one in. And none of these cases either. Typically, we would do this when there's a gap. A gap between curb and gutter or a gap between sidewalk. Now, if there is damage to the public right of way because of construction activities, you know, maybe heavy equipment or stuff like that, that could be different. But in our unique situation, we we uh feel comfortable letting people know that this is not gonna be a requirement.
And and exactly, and just because it it's written into this ordinance doesn't mean it's going to apply necessarily to to homes in Sierra Madre. We're try- we're trying to have a a very, we're taking broad strokes here because we don't know what we're gonna see in the field and we don't know what to expect in the future if there's future debris flows.
Yeah.
Scrolling further down, uh right, yeah, sorry, ex- um extending the expiration dates of entitlements. Uh currently, uh our subdivision maps expire within twenty-four months. Um zoning permits expire, uh I believe it's also twenty-four months if I'm not mistaken. Or one year, apologies. Uh they expire in a year. So what we're what we're proposing is for all those permits, all those entitlement permits that are set to expire in twenty twenty-five to extend all those out for an additional two years.
So what does it mean to have a subdivision permit that expires in twenty twenty-five? Is that someone that has an active building?
I mean, that means, correct. That means you have a ten, you you sub- no, you subdivided your lot. Right, you want you wanna you want to subdivide your lot, you have a tentative track map.
Right.
And you have two years to final to file the final map. But in order to file that final map, you need to meet certain conditions before we allow the filing of that final.
Right.
Now, if that property owner, because of the fire, needs more time, we're just gonna give him autom- they don't need to apply to the city. Automatically, we're giving them two additional years to meet all those conditions.
How many properties does this does this apply to?
Specifically, I don't know. I'll defer to staff, zero.
Okay.
Right now, zero.
Does it create a loophole for the meadows because the the fire came through there or does it?
No, because they don't have, they're not a red tagged or yellow tagged facility.
Okay.
That's always the issue.
Right. Um again, that and if this does apply to an applicant in the future. Um, again, that and if this does apply to an applicant in the future, uh, there's there's some minimal cost savings involved in avoiding applying to the city to get an extension, all that.
But you would have had to had applied to it in twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Or to expire in twenty twenty-five, so.
Right.
Okay, we'll move on.
Can I, can I just interject something? Um, sitting in on those planning commission meetings, uh, it seemed to me pretty clear that cost was really not as important as expediting the process, shortening the timeframe. So these folks can get back into their homes. So I just, we were talking about saving money and saving money, you know, that's helpful, but I think for many of them, it's more about getting back as quickly as possible.
Switching uh topics now, we went from, we were talking about entitlements, now we're talking about post-entitlements, building permits. Uh, staff is proposing suspending the applicability of low-impact development ordinance. Um, that is the, it's also known as the LID ordinance. Um, that has to do with uh controlling the excess runoff uh into our MS four, the municipal storm sewer system.
All right.
Um, again, it's very expensive. When when a when a project requires an extensive, when when the LID ordinance triggers uh ex- expensive um development of that site to to capture like rainwater or something, um, staff estimates that the civil engineering alone can cost six thousand and then the LID improvements can be upwards of twenty-five thousand. So this would suspend it on all those properties um that have been impacted by the fire, I don't know if you had anything else to add on that, Annals Cross?
Um, not really, but I I wanna make it clear that it does not necessarily suspend grading and drainage planning, so we do still need to make sure that we have uh elimination of cross-lot drainage and everything like that can be can be managed safely. They don't have to do the added expense to take those steps for water conservation and water quality by infiltrating a certain amount.
So it so it's infiltrating it on the property? That would be like adding crushed rock or something to allow the water to percolate further down?
That that's correct, it could also be reused, but um it is quite expensive, we're we're looking at a lot of you know, underground chambers with different sized media that will go down and it's great for our water conservation, it's great to keep the pollutants out of the MS four. Uh, in this case, with the, you know, limited amount of properties, as long as the grading and the drainage is safe and adequate, we can spare them this expense for for the for the extra amount.
So this won't have any impact on our MS four permit or or our compliance with the the trash TMDL or anything like that?
It would be extremely limited and and we could mitigate it in other ways.
And and our permit allows us to exempt properties. We have that authority under the permit.
Are there any like general recommendations we can make? Like I I I don't want people to go through this, but you know, water is such a precious resource in our city and our in our area that if there are things that can be recommended or if there's things that can be streamlined, like I I I I will not, you know, require thi- this type of analysis for these these homes, we we can't do that, but I I also wanna balance it of can we?
Well, and yeah, I'm I'm and staff is prepared to um have these discussions with the applicants. There's also a number of ways that perhaps when they're designing their grading and drainage, some inf- infiltration would be smart, it would be aesthetic, it would be what they want, it would make it easier for them. So those are the kind of discussions we're ready to have with these folks.
Okay, perfect. Scrolling further down. Uh, streamlining appro- approval of building plans, um, public work staff. Okay, can you scroll further down, sorry? Yeah. Um, so earlier you had talked about building codes and which one is gonna apply? So if a property was built pursuant to the twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-two building codes, um, under the government executive order and under this ordinance, they can build again um under those same building code standards. So we just recycle their existing plans that we have on file. But for all those properties that were built before, u- using some uh building code cycle before twenty nineteen, they would have to build up to uh, I think it's gonna be the twenty twenty-five building code, whatever the new building code that's gonna be published, which I think is gonna be published in twenty twenty-five. Go further down. Building permits are also proposed to be extended uh for an additional two years. So if a property owner has an active building permit, but due to the fire, just needs more time to exercise that permit, they'll have an additional two years. Scroll further down. Uh, some additional cost savings there. Uh, geological and soil reports. We're not actually suspending anything here. Instead, what the city council is doing is recommending to the city engineer that instead of just requiring these types of reports, that the city engineer uh based on the preponderance of available evidence, determine whether or not these reports are needed. If if in his discretion, he determines they're needed, we will require it. If he determines that this specific site, given all the factors that he's able to evaluate, doesn't, probably doesn't need it, then he won't be re- recommending it, or he won't be requiring it. So we're, this is just reminding him of his discretion and to and to exercise that discretion. Streamlining administrative review, uh sta- staff is proposing contracting out all the public works functions related to the redevelopment of those sites to Willdan Engineering. Willdan Engineering als- already serves as our uh engineer and does our, is our fire code marshal. Now they'd be taking on all the um basically all the post-entitlement work. That's not to say public work staff wouldn't also review it on their own, definitely planning would would review it as part of the entitlement process. Uh, but they'd be charged with overseeing this uh post-entitlement process and they have represented to us that they can provide a ten-day, ten-business-day turnaround time. Researching fire hydrant flows.
So before you leave that, do we know, so there's there's no quantifiable time or financial savings, but it's a, what's the cost to the city on that, do we have any estimate or range?
You all know, does the staff know? Obviously, we'd have to come back, if it's going to be an amendment to the contract, we'd have to come back to the city council to approve that amendment because it's gonna be beyond the city manager's signing authority, because we're gonna amend the existing contract, which is, which city council had already approved, so you would see that again, is my point.
So and would that be part of the SCE cost recovery?
Uh, that would, we would seek it, yes, we we would list it as one of the costs borne by the city and we would seek it.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the question, uh, I don't believe that there are any actualized costs incurred by the city for the expedited review, but we can project based on what expedited review is, in an ordinary case, it would be one hundred fifty percent those fees that would be charged on a plan check review. And that's that's a variable based on the project's valuation, so somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars.
We're waiving the plan check, right?
We're not waiving plan check fee, but we're waiting the expedited additional fee for that.
Okay.
Plan check still happens, dis- discretionary review doesn't.
Okay. So then the expedited, we 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 basically cover the cost of that, there's a cost of of that fifty percent that that we would cover for the ten-day.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Uh, I think this is the last one, researching fire hydrant flows. So as I understand from staff, that's not the last one, as I understand from staff, um, the city prior to development, the city public works department or the fire department measures fire hydrant flows within one thousand feet of a structure to ensure that there is sufficient capacity in that hydrant. Um, previously, staff relied on um one of our fire officials to do that work. Uh, but that official is no longer with the city anymore, and so we don't have anyone in the house that can do that work. I spoke to the fire chief, fire chief wants to train an individual to take on this task, but in the interim, he's contacted the city of Pasadena, and I don't know if we've heard back from the city of Pasadena. We have not. We ha- so we haven't heard back from the city of Pasadena, but we we reached out to the city of Pasadena's fire department. The fire department told us that their water department handles that work, the 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 flow analysis, and we're waiting to hear back from their, from the city of Pasadena's water department.
Is that something potentially our water department could do, or is it really?
Ideally.
Is that a training opportunity?
I believe that is a training opportunity, it just it just depends on the amount of workflow, our goal is to turn these plans around in ten days if we're managing multiple projects, it could it could be difficult, but definitely something we can look into.
Uh, and this is, this is the last one. Again, this isn't, this isn't suspending anything. Uh, this is simply reminding our fire code official that he has the authority to exer- he has the dis- she has a discretion to approve alternative material designs and construction methods that are at least as effective, durable and safe as a pers- as prescribed in the fire code. She's aware of this responsibility, she brought it to our attention, she says she doesn't usually exercise it, uh unless the applicant requests it. Now she will be offering it to the applicants if there's some kind of supply shortage and applicants are unable to obtain the supplies because everyone's trying to reconstruct around the same time, I think. Let me scroll further down, and I believe that concludes my report, just scroll further down. Uh, fiscal impact to the city, uh obviously, the time spent on this ordinance. Any costs borne as a result of this ordinance, we're gonna try to seek recovery for all those costs as part of the ESC litigation. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Any further questions?
So we we have a cost-sharing agreement or fee-sharing agreement with Willdan. I believe it's sixty forty, but I don't remember the exact cut, um, are any of these fees that we are waiving part of that uh contract, or are these all the ones that we do with our current staff?
Uh, so it will, the fire code official is going to have to review these. Um, so it's going, and and as will the engineer, so it will, it will.
As far as the wa- the wa- the waived fees?
It will not impact the waived fees. All those, uh, sorry, it will not waive any of those fees. So our fire code official is going to recover full cost, as will the the engineer when he reviews plans.
Plan check and s- soil and geological if that's necessary.
Right, uh, I will say, it's that that contract that you're referring to is the one that will be amended if the city council chooses to include that provision uh in the ordinance, that's the contract that will be amended with Willdan to expand out that forty-sixty split, so the public works tasks.
And the soil and engineering, I mean, that's that's really a safety issue for for the building, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
All right, then we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, we have two speaker cards at this time, the first and the second is from Katrina Hitzthoff.
Thank you, so first of all, I wanna say, everything you just proposed absolutely has to go ahead for these residents. They they deserve it, they have gone through hell, I am not one of those residents who's had my house burned to the ground or partially burned to ground, so that's the first thing I wanna say, and nothing I'm about to say should stop that or in any way affect what's already in plan, it sounds like an amazing plan. What I'd like to do is bring, as this is an emergency ordinance, I'd like to bring to your attention the importance of thinking about all the other rev- residents who were impacted. I was out of my home for a long time, I have extensive fire damage. Um, and I've talked directly to the fire department about home hardening and vegetation management. Um, based on the CAL FIRE severity maps that came out yesterday, somewhere between a third and a half of Sierra Madre is now either in that extreme, which is where I live, I live in the canyon, so I'm affected by mud and flood and everything else. Um, or even up to a half, I mean, to to see the red, the severity go below grand view was pretty shocking, right? So we've got a major challenge for our city over the next five years when it comes to home hardening and vegetation management. Insurance companies are now demanding that we have tempered glass double-planed windows, they're demanding that we have metal vents in our um attics, et cetera, that's that's what I'm getting from State Farm. If I wanna keep my insurance, I need to do these things. Um, at the same time, I I talked to our fire department, they directed me to CAL FIRE for their standards for home hardening, they directed me to LA County for their standards for vegetation, the five feet, the ten feet, the thirty feet, et cetera. I've gone through all of that, the challenge is we have a lot of red tape. I understand the historical society, I understand all of these components, but it adds a lot of time and it adds a lot of cost. And people are feeling overwhelmed already because, trust me, I'm looking at paying about eighty thousand dollars, just as context for you, out of pocket to get my home back to what it was, not not fancy to do the cleanup, right? Then on top of that, I need to do all the hardening, and that fire freaked me out. All right, and I I want to make those changes and I want to do it in a way that is careful. What I'm asking is you look at ways, you think about that half of Sierra Madre, and probably everybody, um, you remove the red tape of costs and time and you align, re- prioritize all of the uh planning uh standards we have in place so that fire is considered right at the top, 'cause right now it feels like if you have wood sash windows, I have a house that's over seventy-five years old, if I wanna replace them, I'm being asked to replace them with as-is, I don't want to. I wanna replace them with metal tempered double-pane windows. It's gonna cost me a fortune going through an endless set of permits and red tape to get there is very off-putting. So I understand why all these measures in place, I'm asking that maybe we think a little differently because I think this affects so many Sierra Madre residents in addition to people that this emergency is directly to, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker card is received from uh Sander Sanden Sandbergin.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, hello, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members and anyone else still awake? Uh, my name is Sanders Sandbergin, my wife and I uh live in the upper canyon of Sierra Madre, on Skyline Drive. My main statement will be short and to the point. We stand in one hundred percent support of Katrina Hitzthoff's public statement from just now. So just here to uh show support, but I also wanna go a little bit further. I wanna say that I truly appreciate the intent of the proposed ordinance, urgency ordinance and the time spent preparing it, so thank you, thank you for the time spent on that stuff. But I don't think it goes far enough or includes enough people. As most of you are aware, specifically from Chief Bartlet's presentation, CAL FIRE released uh the state's updated wildfire hazard maps. And certain areas have not changed much because we all know we we live in a foothill community. We are particularly susceptible to wildfires, but in fact, half of Sierra Madre is now in a very high fire hazard severity zone, we also have areas that are high and moderate severity. The Eaton Fire Burn Scar butts up against most of the northern Sierra Madre wildlife boundary, so we may not expect another bad wildfire in our area for a few years. But we shouldn't count on that or rest on our laurels. Uh, with climate change accelerating, we will see more of these extreme weather events like the wind-driven Eaton Fire Storm or worse. If we continue with the status quo and how we prepare for wildfires or how we view these events, then Sierra Madre could be gone. And that isn't hyperbole, look at western uh Oterina. In in the LA area, I believe the city of uh Sierra Madre should lead the way and develop an aggressive and data-driven plan in preparing for the next wildfire event to protect our city, its residents and our homes. Including, but not limited to uh adopting fully and perhaps going beyond CAL FIRE recommendations for brush removal and home hardening, as well as taking a hard look at our building codes permitting costs, timelines for construction and fire-related upgrades. And as Chief Bartlet mentioned, changing city ordinance to this effect and perhaps making them retroactive, meaning no grandfathering or rolling back fire-related codes, as that would defeat the point. If you protect your home, but your neighbor does not, then if their home ignites, then yours most likely will as well. Demonstrating that this is truly a community effort. I recommend that the city uh immediately form what we call NASA Tiger Team, which is a small, cross-functional group of experts assembled to address specific complex issues or solve particular or systemic problems. This could be led or initiated by the fire department and due to the urgency, the team should probably meet weekly to quickly develop a general plan to put residents' minds at ease. There should of course be neighbor representation, transparent reporting from the team, happy to talk more about this later. Uh, and if the fire department, working with city planning, is already doing something like this, great, and I'd love to know more about it. We should develop a plan to ensure that the more remote areas, uh, remote neighborhoods of Sierra Madre aren't also classified as loss causes during the next event and invest uh in our infrastructure accordingly. We can and should discuss at another time how the city and the residents will pay uh for these loss prevention investments in our city, and it could partly be funded by grants um proposed by. um, proposed by the Fire Safe Council or, uh, pursued by the Fire Safe Council as Chief Bartlett presented a few weeks back. We're a small community. We all live here for a reason. My wife and I love the wildlife. The people in the small town feel, we will do anything we can to protect our home, our neighbors, and our city. And I know you all and, um, my neighbors feel the same. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any further comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. Alright. How would you guys like to proceed?
Well, I would like to support this as it is. I don't see any reason to change it, but I also am taking note, very careful note of what we just heard. I would like to agendize a future discussion of possibly expanding some of the things we're discussing tonight.
So I, I, I completely agree with the expanding the discussion, and so I, I welcome having something like that on the future agenda. I do think there's at least one thing that we do have in here we have to make the decision on, right? And that was with respect to, uh, remind me again.
Historical resources?
Yes, the historic, whether we do that. So thoughts on the, maybe we start with that part? And then, uh, cause we have to make the decision there and then see if there's any broader.
So you mean re- requiring it or subsidizing it or what? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, I think the city council maybe has three options, and staff, correct me if there are more or less, but either don't do it. Save, save the funds and just don't do any kind of report. Number two, do report, but limited to only to those properties that would be eligible for historic designation. Or three, uh, do report and expand it out to all the properties that were impacted by the fire. And to create some kind of comprehensive historical report on the Eaton Fire and its impact on the city.
And if we did the third option, the comprehensive, then is that a, a cost to the city?
All, all, yes. Do, all this would be a cost to the city. The applicant would not bear this cost.
Oh, so, so yeah, cause we're plan, preparing, okay, we're proposing not to do it, but there's no cost to the city. We cover the cost for each of the property, or we do one for the, the area?
Uh, right.
Okay. What do you think, Mr. Mayor? Well, you know.
I, you know, I think that Senior Planner Wolf's comment is that, uh, once we start building, we lose that history, right? And history is something that's very important to the city, right? So I think we need to do something. And I kind of lean towards the answer of doing a, one for the area, right? Did, did we capture kind of the area and the, all of the buildings?
House by house, you know, the whole neighborhood?
Well, I, I, I would want to see what the, the actual, the details of the proposal. What I'm understanding is that it is, it would, it would be not as in-depth of a, as a house by house. At least what I'm thinking is not as in-depth as a house by house, but it would cover the houses that are there and the, any historic natures of the neighborhoods and the, the, the area. That, that's what I heard, that, that third option.
And, sorry. I was, I was going to say, I, maybe staff has a recommendation. I don't know if staff has a recommendation on this.
That's actually really good. Thank you.
I do not have a recommendation in either direction. But I just want to point out that we don't have an estimate for the cost of a more comprehensive survey that analyzes the neighborhoods yet, so I don't know what that would be, but I'm more than happy to consult with our consultant team and figure out what that might be.
So based on your understanding, i- is it something that would be less than a house by house?
That's my understanding. Yes, le- less than house by house, but more, uh, a neighborhood level review of the impact.
Cause, cause we're, we're ballparking the fifty to sixty thousand. If, if we have approximately thirty homes and, so I guess it's forty-five thousand, right? If, if it's fifteen hundred a, a home and thirty homes ballpark, then that's, that, that's forty-five thousand dollars. Is that about right?
Or less, yes.
Yeah.
And, and we can always, if you provide us with direction on what you'd like to see, we can always come back to the city council with a proposal to cons- to be considered at, at a future meeting.
When you said there's an option where we could look at the houses and require a historical review when they are eligible, would that supposes that we might have information that some of these thirty are not eligible upfront?
Yes.
That's correct, so.
How many? Do we know?
Um, so as I mentioned earlier, we, we have twenty-four, give or take, that are seventy-five years or older, or worse, or seventy-five years or older. From that twenty-four, we could potentially narrow it down to more, uh, that, that might be disqualified just based on, uh, visual analysis of Google imagery street, street view, for example.
So you could significantly reduce them even?
Potentially. Uh, we don't know the exact numbers at this time.
And Planner Wolf, you, Wolf, you, you stated earlier that none of these are of architectural significance? We already know that?
We do not know that.
Oh, okay.
The report would tell us.
But given that they are burned down, it's, it's hard to say that they are still architecturally significant. They, they might have been, but they aren't today.
So the, the preservation of the record would be for a significant resident and, you know, I don't know what, what that means. Uh, we know about most of them, um, cause I would hate, when I'm dead and buried, for the city to have to incur a cost just to say that, oh, former Mayor Garcia lived there. Um, I wouldn't want that. Um, and I don't think it's that big of a deal, cause our, my wife says, um, everybody becomes a mayor in Sierra Madre eventually. Looking out there and I see one or two, right? So I, that, I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm trying to make a little light of it, but at the end of the day, I, I, maybe the hiso- historic significance of, of the fire is important to our historic record. Um, but I, I don't know. I, I, we're, we're forecasting budget deficits.
Yeah.
Um, it's very hard for me, even to the tune of forty-five thousand dollars or whatever it might be, to, to approve something when I know departments and safety are going without and infrastructure from what we heard. Um, it's, maybe I'm callous on this and, um, I, I just, it's hard for me to, to approve something like that.
Practically, typically when we would do this, it's so we can have a historical home. We're not going to get that for, by spending this money. So I, I have to agree with you. I, I just don't think it's worth it.
That's kind of where I'm sitting on this one.
Yeah.
But I do understand, especially from, from the lens of the planning and preservation department, the importance of it. Um, but it's hard for me as ma- you know, making the big decisions here.
Yeah, no, I.
With taxpayers' money. And, you know, maybe it's recoverable through potential litigation. I, I don't know, but I would hate to have to rely on that.
Right. No, it's a, it's a, it's a very good point.
I mean, if we could preface it so, and say, well, you know, we're going to evaluate these properties using Google or whatever. We can reduce it down to a fairly small number, then that's another issue altogether.
I'm very comfortable with that.
I am too, but I mean.
Yeah.
Fifty thousand dollars.
No, no, I, I, that, that was, that was like, so we had an idea on the ceiling.
Right, right.
And, and I definitely want, so let me, let me attack this from a slightly different angle, and let me see if I can get our, our librarian, Regan, up here. To, just to see, because, and I, and I say this because the library has the historic record. If you could, I, if this, if, if, if I'm off base, please tell me, but what I'm trying to think through is you have the, you know, all of this, many of the historic records of the city there. What would be of significant, um, what would be of significant value to the library and to future generations of looking? Like, you know who the people are going to come in and asking for this type of information. You have the records of it. Is there any guidance you can give us on this?
Thank you, Mayor Parkers and council members. Um, this would actually be a wonderful question for Debbie Henderson, our archivist.
Right.
We did just ask her, interestingly enough recently, what the oldest document that we have, uh, referring to our, to our, um, city. And I think she said it's back in the eighteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds. So there is some significance, and I think the, the things that we know we're going to be collecting in the future are as, as, um, people get older, they like to remember their nostalgia, and then they tend to donate everything to the library. Um, and with our new archival space, we'll actually be able to receive it. But a lot of it is, um, homes and, um, for, for example, um, I will say also the city of Monrovia, if you have a historic home, in order to build onto it, you have to actually prove that it's not historic. Like, if you have a home, you have to prove that it's not historic to be able to do an expansion or anything like that. Thankfully, we're not that way, where, um, you have to disprove that it's historic. But, um, we do have a lot that do research whether or not their homes are historic. Um, I know recently, I believe in previous city council meeting, we talked about the two homes that were the famous architect, Green and Green. So I can imagine things of that nature will come in, but Debbie Henderson, our archivist, would be, I'd be happy to bring her uh, to a city council meeting to discuss, but, uh, more often than not, a lot of what we receive are homes and memorabilia.
What was, you see, receive what in memorabilia?
Um, information on historic homes.
Information on homes.
Mostly photos.
Got it.
Um, a lot of photos and a lot of, um, newsreels. Uh, the library is very fond of our Throwback Thursdays, so every now and then you'll catch, um, some of the, um, items from the archives there on our social media.
Got it.
Mayor?
Yes.
As, as you know, we've, this process has developed very quickly. And it occurred to me just now, hearing this discussion, that we had a this, we had a conversation with our litigation council prior to publication of this that may be of, may be useful. If the city council chooses, perhaps we can find out what the cost would be for some kind of historical resources report and include it as the costs incurred for the city or that should be incurred as a result of the fire and see if it's recoverable. And if, if the judge grants the recovery, then potentially we could fund it through, uh, the SC litigation. But if the judge denies that recovery, then, uh, maybe no historical resource report is done. Just an idea. So you, you would punt it, the issue, uh, and just to see how it plays out in litigation settlement discussion.
Any, any timeline on that? Any possible speculation?
The litigation council estimates, uh, one to two years for settlement.
We might not, not get an answer on that issue for months.
For, definitely months.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I, the, the, the short answer of this, and I think building up what you said, I'd like to approve this tonight.
Yeah.
Right, I, I, I think that the ur- we, it's an urgency ordinance. We need to act with urgency. I, there's nothing on here, you know, with all my questions, that, that give me any pause on it. I think, I, you know, I feel comfortable with it, approving it going forward. Um, I would like, you, you, you think about signi- this is a significant event for the city. And so capturing something on it, I think is appropriate. I just don't know what that is right now, right? And, and, and if it's a small cost, I, I want, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be really budget sensitive, but also this is, this is, you know, people will talk about this.
Right.
For generations to come. And I, I, I don't want to lose, and may, may, maybe, maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way, right? Maybe if, thinking about it from the, the home's perspective is the wrong angle on it. But, you know, this is, this is part of our historical record of the city.
So I, I think capturing something on it, and I agree with you, I think that's outside the scope of this urgency ordinance for people to rebuild their homes.
Absolutely.
So we can, I think we can entertain that some, uh, some other way.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, yeah, I don't, I don't think it needs to be within, uh, this emergency ordinance. I, I, I think that's what we're calling it.
Yeah.
Um, and kind of, you know, kind of going back to the historical significance, um, you, you kind of heard where, where I weigh on that. But as far as architectural significance, again, um, we're talking about the majority of these homes being red tagged. They're, they're going to get, it's not, it's not the same building. It's not like somebody's coming saying, I want to make changes to my home.
No.
Um, and we would like to have a say in what happens to it because it's still existing. Um, these are non-existing, uh, structures now.
So, so I guess the, the one angle, you know, there, there is in Pasadena, the tiles project that's going on, right? There's a lo- number of the homes that have had tiles that were made and they were on the fireplaces. I don't think, do we have anything like that that's of historic significance in any of these homes, any?
And I think it's mainly Altadena rather than Pasadena.
I'm sorry, yes. I meant, I meant to say Altadena. Thank you for that. Okay.
Like bachelor tiles from hearths and things of that nature.
Exactly.
So I'm not aware of the, the tiles program, but in, in terms of what Sierra Madre reviews in historical context, it doesn't expand into the interior of a home?
Ah. Right, so e- even if, okay, even if we were doing the historical, it's just going to be the exterior. Okay. Alright.
Well, could, so just brainstorming, right? So maybe we could agendize this and bring in the historical society.
Yeah.
And see if we could partner with them on some kind of a, some kind of a study we could contract for that might give us some kind of.
I, I, I like.
Larger historical assessment of, of the homes and neighborhood. And maybe, uh, then maybe we could share costs or bring some volunteers in on it.
I mean, they just recently published a book that had some of that, that oral history, so if there's something, they may have some, some, um, contacts and some, um, some information that could be helpful, then we could, we could be supporting them that way. I'm good with that.
I think we could get that done for a lot less money.
And so where I sit on this now, though, uh, in front of us, is not requiring residents to have a historical assessment.
Yes.
Um, but maybe have language in there that, um, at the planning desk, um, it could be recommended. Your home was old. You know, some people, some, we, we generally require this. We're not going to. You might want to just incur the cost on your own, just to know.
Might add value.
Yeah.
You know, might add value.
Right.
Yeah, I like that. Add language recommending it.
Does that make sense?
Uh, it, it does make sense. So, uh, I, I thought the direction earlier was maybe to strike it, but you're not saying strike section twenty-three regarding historic resource evaluation. You're saying instead add or substitute in language that encourages staff to, encourages staff to encourage residents.
Recommend it, or, or at least inform them and recommend it on what the.
Okay. So then we can, we can revise that to read, um, city council directs staff to recommend to property owners to pursue historic resource evaluation. Very good.
Okay. Is there any other, are there any other decisions that we need to make on this?
Uh, no council. The, like I said, the Will Dan, uh, contract will come before you at a future council meeting. So if you provide us this direction, so if you're okay with us proceeding with Will Dan to contract out that work, then, then we'll bring a contract to you in the future.
It's one, one expense either way, right? It's either going to be our staff overtime or, or Will Dan to be able to expedite these permits.
Mayor, it's, it's not staff overtime. It's, it's staff's, um, capacity to be able to turn these around in, in ten days.
Okay.
And, and I, I just don't think that our public works has the, uh, the capacity to do that right now.
Okay. Then, then we should, we should do it.
Uh, what's the recommendation on the LID requirements? It's that suspend.
Suspend, okay.
Holy suspend.
Mm-hmm. But is there any, so is there, can we put something in there about best practices, recommendation? Like, I, like, I don't want to, I, I don't want any large costs, but if there's something we can do to help with infiltration, I mean, is it, uh, Senior Analyst Carson, I, I, I think I heard that, that it's part of that already. I, I'm, I'm trying to make sure.
Yeah, I think you can assume that that's going to be a part of our review regardless.
Okay.
It's to suggest best practices and alternatives that, that may meet that.
That's where I sit now, is these people did not make a choice to have their home rebuilt.
Um, yeah.
And that's when the LID requirements come into play.
Right, good point.
And, I mean, I'm, I'm only soft on if they had an existing catchment, uh, vessel within their front lawn or something previously under the, the LID requirements, that maybe we, we require them to have that again. Um, that's the only way I'm soft on it. But other than that, I'm pretty hard that they did, that these individuals did not make a choice to rebuild their home. So I, I think this is a, and I, I've talked to, uh, quite a few residents about the, the cost, and it, that twenty-five thousand dollar number is, is a real number. that twenty-five thousand dollar number is, is a real number.
So, so we're, we're looking at, at adopting this as, as written? With, with the one modification of, of the, the soft recommendation on the historic.
My commission was unanimous.
It's, looks like we're at a point where we can entertain a motion.
Okay, so, that's not the right, that's not the
So this is ordinance?
Number fourteen eighty dash U.
Yep.
I move that we uh, approve ordinance number fourteen eighty dash U, approving an uncodified urgency ordinance to streamline and reduce the cost of redevelopment of structures impacted by the Eaton fire.
A- as amended.
As amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? All right, now we're on to our second discussion item, which is the GAN limits. So um, do we?
Director Rainey?
Oh wow. Mayor Director Rainey can give a brief presentation. Great. Thank you for letting us put you on the spot.
A pleasant good evening. Uh, Mayor Parkhurst, uh, Councilmember Garcia, uh, Councilmember Goss, Anthony Rainey, Finance Director. Uh, a little bit of background, in June the sixth of nineteen seventy-eight, two people known by the name of Jar- Howard Jarvis and Paul Gann, put an initiative on the ballot called Proposition thirteen. It was put on the ballot to limit the appreciation of property taxes. Throughout the years, we've seen cities, counties, school districts put other limitations on this to basically keep the budgets, um, the appreciation of budgets from rising based on property taxes. What we have here tonight is a, an agenda report of the review of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five GAN appropriations limit, is what, what they call it. Uh, calculation and external audit confirmation. Uh, the perspective is this, is that you approve this in June of twenty twenty-four. Usually, the GAN uh, limits are approved as a part of the budget. However, the former uh, Finance Director was very concerned about the number that came in in terms of how close we were to the GAN limit. So what we did is we entered into contract with our external auditor, who does our financial audits, to audit this. Uh, unbeknownst to me, I had to do the calculations uh, of this. Um, I came up, uh, the, actually the recalculations. I did, uh, I performed recalculations, which is an attachment to on the spreadsheet, from twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen to the current year and had the auditor audit that. That's in attachment one, the auditor's findings. Uh, what we wanted to do is make, this was our internal control to assure us that we did not make any mistakes, we did not uh, undercount or overcount uh, before. Um, this was kind of a deja vu for me because when I was the Finance Director for the City of Maywood, I had to do the same thing. I felt com- uh, felt compelled uh, to bring this to you because we are very, very close to the GAN limit. What does that mean? It basically means uh, there's a misnomer that people think that just because the property in your city or your county or your school district goes up, that you can tap into that property tax and your budget will increase. No, 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 that's not how it works. Um, the GAN limit basically looks at three things. Population growth, it looks at inflation, the Consumer Price Index, it looks at revenue surges, property tax windfalls, new development, and things like this. The State Controller's Office comes up with a formula in which every municipality has to utilize to basically look at that appreciation. Now, the question uh, has come up, uh, how have other cities been? Had to quickly look at that on the, the web. Uh, Pasadena, Arcadia, Monrovia, San, uh, San Marino, and Duarte uh, are about, they range from eighty-five to ninety percent, close to their limit, to seventy-five to eighty-five percent. Um, but they're not as close uh, to the GAN limit uh, as we, as we are. Uh, so what we basically wanted to do is to disclose this because as we get into the budget season for the twenty five, five, twenty-six budget, we may be confronted depending on population, depending on the inflation factor, depending on uh, the number of properties that come onto our tax rolls as to how much our budget can appreciate. Um, I've talked with the city attorney about some ways of, uh, I wouldn't say getting around it, but being within the limit. Uh, I just wanna say one thing, I went in and basically shown that uh, everything from revenue growth, population and inflation adjustments, expenditures, inclusions. One of the things that I will say saved us was the hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we had in there for capital outlays. That is what kept, kept us from going to a hundred and ten thousand. Um, I, I can tell you, this is the closest I've ever been to it. Uh, and me and the uh, city attorney have discussed uh, what would happen if we went over the limit, what, what we have to, to do, what we would have to prevent it. Um, so we basically wanted to come back and say, we looked at the numbers. They were audited by our external auditor, uh, we are this close. Uh, and we thought that before we go into the next fiscal year, we need to disclose this to everyone so that everyone understands that we might, I won't know until May, that's when I get the letter from the State Controller's Office and do the calculations, we may be limited again. Are there ways of going above the limit? Yes, there's some things called levies and, and other uh, opportunities that you can, can do to do that, but because of where we are in the uh, putting something on the ballot on the election, uh, another thing is with uh, using uh, grants and other things for funding, um, capital projects uh, and the like. But as far as I can see right now, um, I basically gave you three alternatives. You can choose to receive and file the report. Uh, you can basically say the city's operating close to the appropriation, which it is, and ask do I look at I, other exempt expenditures, capital outlays, and debt service. I disclose this, but only to tell you, we did that and the auditor did that. Oh, there's one more thing. Unlike a lot of other cities, we have to do this report to the state on, it's called LGRS, and I forget what the acronym stands for. And it's basically, you have to report back to the state, every city, school district, community college district, your finances. We have this compiled by an independent contractor and they also check our numbers. So I'm here to tell you that there is no identification of other uh, exempt expenditures. Uh, so that basically is, is not an option. Um, so uh, with that, I know it's not very good news, but I felt compelled to disclose this to everyone beforehand so that uh, we kinda understood. Uh, I didn't want us to go through the budget process and we go through, and then in May, basically say, oh, hold it, hold it. Uh, we're above the limit, uh, we're gonna have to, to cut. So I'm open to any questions.
What, and I, I just wanna mention next steps, cause the report didn't have next ex- ne- next steps, it's a disclosure. But in terms of next steps, as an example, the City of San Marino, every four years has a ballot measure to uh, increase its GAN limit. And I suspect the City of Sierra Madre will have to do the same exact thing. So starting in twenty twenty-six, um, or twenty twenty-eight, uh, we'll have to see. We're, we're likely gonna have to include um, a ballot measure every four years on the ballot thereafter.
Thank you, um, Director Rainey, um, Smerick.
Yes, absolutely. You, you, you pulled this, you get to ask the first set of questions.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think I, I agendized this too, um, cause this was concerning to me. Um, I was having conversations about this, um, uh, during Measure PS to make sure, I, I was really nervous about this issue. Um, and I think you, what you identified in your report was that had it passed, and let's say inflation was four percent, i- inflation really should be more like two, two and a quarter percent. Um, we would need a fourteen percent increase in population to make
Exactly.
That fly.
And our population went down according to the state.
And so I'm contemplating all kinds of things, I, I, I'm not trying to get into discussion, I'm just trying to preface questions for now, um, that we can discuss, but um, the thing that really is irking me is that we were one of, less than a handful of cities that had a all volunteer fire department that went to a partial volunteer fire department, I think in two thousand five, fifteen rather, two thousand fifteen, ten years ago, we had four, maybe five, full-time paid uh, employees on the fire department. Now we have, I think the report out was eighteen, nineteen maybe? There has to be an exemption for that type of new department, um, that that finds itself out of thin air, right? This, this, this public safety arm that's completely necessary for us. Um, I feel like there has to be an exemption for that, and I don't, I, my question is, is there? Have you heard of? Because even, even if we, not that we wanna contract with, we couldn't even afford to contract with um, with LA County if we wanted to, and we don't want to. Um, so how, how does this work for someone in our situation where uh, we go from having expenditures this size? Yes, we cut a whole bunch to, to make room, but we're now giving up quality of life issues for the city. Is, how, how do, how does somebody go about that?
I, and I will turn to the uh, city attorney on there. I, as far as the taxes are concerned, um, there is, unless you go to, with an initiative or go to the voters with something, there is no other way.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need, put, put aside a local initiative, I think we need a constitutional initiative to amend the Cal- to the California constitution to add the exception or exemption you're, you're talking about. It's necessary, and it, and it wasn't contemplated, I assume, at the time the GAN limit was adopted.
And there are examples, a- as you bring up, where cities have taken on other, uh, they've absorbed things that were being done independently, like an independent uh, uh, I won't say a water district because that's an enterprise fund, but they've taken on other functions, uh, community development or something like that. But even still, they have to be within that GAN limit. Um, there, there are no uh, exceptions, and a- as the city attorney uh, alludes to, um, it basically puts handcuffs on you as, in terms of expansion. Um, it's very, 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 very uh, stringent. And we even, I mean, I was, I was, I won't say I was worried, I was terrified that uh, we would go over and we were discussing, well, what happens if we do go over? Uh, what do we have to do? And a lot of uh, strange things about returning tax money back, uh.
And, and I, and I, that's the consequence, you, you have to refund fund, you have to refund tax dollars. And I've, I've been told by people more knowledgeable.
GAN limit, you have to refund tax dollars.
Right, and I, I've been told by people more knowledgeable than myself about this subject, that in the state of California, a refund has never been issued. So, public agencies are placing these on the ballot and they're passing.
So, and also I wanna contemplate, um, that brings up another issue, um, sales and use tax. So, we, we had an initiative where we uh, increased it by uh, three quarters of a percent. Therefore, our, our sales tax goes up on revenue side, uh, potentially seventy-five percent.
Right.
Um, relative to what it was at one percent. So, why, why are, I, I get, you're not the legislature, so I, I don't have the answers, but I'm, I'm trying to understand why that is, i- is that part of the calculation? Because if we have to return taxpayers' money, a lot of, a lot of the tax, uh, sales taxes for non-residents coming to our restaurants and going, coming to those other things, and how do you return tax dollars to somebody that was a non-resident that spent money on, on sales tax?
I, I don't know.
I didn't think you did.
In talking to colleagues, uh, what they advised me to do is, you know, I said, Anthony, do you have any capital projects that are coming from the general fund that you can uh, rebook as a capital outlay and get out of that? I mean, uh, but the external auditor and the people that did our LGRS numbers also looked at that. I asked them to, I, I asked them to look at it again and they said, no. Um, and we, we had Rogers, Anderson, Malady, and, and Scott, our, our auditors look at it and they concur, they said there was, there was nothing that I could quote, reprogram at least this fiscal year to do that.
And you, you mentioned um, an expansion in um, home stock, I think you said, or, or development, right?
Yes.
So let's say that if our home stock increases, and I don't know if that, I didn't see that in the report, that, that was something that's exempt, but if our home stock increases, um, an assessed value of two to two and a half percent because all, because the meadows is gonna, are, will conceivably be higher um, tax properties than the average tax property in our city, but our population only goes up um, quarter of one percent, wh- what do we do then, just for, for that event?
Uh, in, in a perfect world, world, new, new development would be property uh, windfalls that, that could help on this.
So that's, th- that creates a new, higher GAN limit for us?
Yes, that, well, that, that's part of the calculation. Again, it's population growth, uh, the CPI, and then these revenue surges primarily with property tax, new development, and it can, uh,
So new development is one of the drivers to increase it. So we either need to get more people to move here, uh, or have bigger families, or we increase development, or we hope that the CPI doesn't go up high. Is that really?
There's another alternative which, which we haven't discussed, and it's not a short-term fix, it'd be a, a long-term fix and we have to think through it. But the GAN limit is measuring revenues from taxes. There are other sources of revenue available to the city. And, and the question would be, can the city shift over to those other sources of revenue? For example, assessments. If you expanded the use of assessment districts and you got assessed and you, and you received those assessments from the assessment districts, those would not be calculated into the property tax calculation, uh, into the GAN limit calculation.
But that would be, only be spending for certain districts, correct? And so I, I don't know that that solves the problem. It might give us nickels and dimes, and I don't think it's sustainable.
Well, you could turn the whole city into a city of districts for various specific purposes.
Right. It, it's, it's just another option, but it's not, it's not a short-term fix by any means.
So, can I just, so what, what this, I remember GAN, I remember what they're all about. So, we're really talking about here is keeping government maintained at various levels of size or shrinking it. Uh, so we've reached a point where we're up against what we can do, basically. So we have really no choice as we move forward. We're either gonna have to cut funding, cut what we're now spending money on, or we're gonna have to send that money to taxpayers. Is that what, where we're at right now?
Ultimately.
Okay.
While running a deficit.
So this is, you know, big news. It's a really different view of the world.
Uh, I can tell you, as long as I'm here, we're not gonna run a deficit.
Thank you.
But, um, I can tell you, what it will mean is that, um, for, for everyone concerned, um, I, my concern is about uh, inflation and uh, my concern is about I, my concern is about inflation, and my concern is about contracts and agreements with cost escalators and our ability to meet them. My concern is about staffing. My concern is about, you know, basically, we, we want to get the best staff that there is. We want to pay them fairly, staying competitive in that. When we get to May and we do the calculation, it's usually May the 15th or the 17th that I do the calculation. I can give you a better idea of what room that we have, and maybe some options of, I don't know. We're going to have to come, we're going to have to come up with some different approaches in this. My purpose of putting this on the agenda was just to raise this right now, to manage everyone's expectations. Not because our revenues are going down, not, you know, or anything like that. It's just that I, I will tell you, my eyes popped out when I saw the $110,000. I was hoping dearly that when I did the recalculations, because when I was in, when I was in Maywood, I redid them and found out that we under, we shorted ourselves, that we could have gone for more and increased. We were right on. We were right on. Didn't, didn't miss a beat. So-
Why did we go from 1.3 to 110? 1.3 million in the previous year, and now go all the way down to 110. That's like, I don't see where the big change is in that swing.
You just brought in a lot of people in fire and emergency services.
That's what it is. It's just the staffing.
Yes. When you do municipal budgets, when you do school district budgets, when you do city, city college budgets and the like, one of the things that you have to look at is the GAN limit. Just because the revenue's out there, you could have a popping economy, doing very, very well, but that GAN limit will tell you how much you can go in, into and tap into that without having to go to the voters.
So we'd have to go to the voters twice if we want to. One is to raise the GAN limit, and then if we want to-
Just like the city attorney said about San Marino. They, they basically said, let's not get ourselves in there. We'll go there and basically keep us out of that. We go to the voters and said, hey, we want to go, we want to raise, raise it. And it's like, okay. And how, what's, is it a 2/3s, or?
The GAN limit, I think, only requires majority.
Okay.
I'll check them. So, Your Attorney, does the, does it need to be two separate initiatives? Or could it be one initiative for revenue and, and within that initiative, an increase in the GAN limit? Or does it have to be two separate ballot measures?
I don't know. I'd have to research the question.
And you mentioned every four years. Does that mean that these voter initiatives can only last for four years? And then they go back to the original, or because they can only last for four years?
It can only last, so although, for example, Measure PS was written for a term of seven years?
Yes.
Because of the GAN limit, it would, it would have to be approved every four years, even though the, the PS was written for seven years.
And, and that makes it very, very, you know, people, we try to explain it and say, well, wait a minute, the voters approved this. There, theoretically, we could have approved the public safety levy here and still not been able to, to fund it because we were over the GAN limit.
So if you, I'm not suggesting we take on debt, but cities that have high debt, and then they finance their debt through some type of parcel tax, that's not, that parcel tax to fund the debt isn't part of the GAN limit?
No. Not the parcel, but debt. If they do the debt.
Because you need to, you need to have a revenue source for the, for the obligation, usually.
Yeah. I don't know. That one, that one I don't know, but I did confirm the, a GAN limit override is a simple majority vote. 50% plus one.
Right. Do we have any more questions? We've kind of gone into discussion as we often do.
Thank you very much for the details.
Thank you for sticking around.
So, then we need to open this up for public comment. Madam Clerk, did you get any comment cards for this?
We do not. Mr. Mayor.
All right. Bring it back for discussion. What's your guys' thoughts? Is there any, any action? Do we want to do this as a receive and file? Or do we want to ask for further research? And maybe I turn to you, Councilmember Garcia, since you know this well and put it on the discussion.
I don't know it well. I don't know it well. Because I remember when Prop 13 passed, I was in second or third grade, or whatever it was, and we had to bring our own paper from that point in time and bring our own pencils. That's what I remember. But, yeah. We're talking about constitutional amendments now, and, and I don't know that we, we kind of try to go for one of those for our special case. You know, as we, as we consider who we are and how we grew, which is much different than how most cities grow, because it's at the detriment of quality-of-life type spending that a lot of our residents come to enjoy and expect. Because we're going to fund public safety.
Right. Well, we're going to fund everything. Governing is expensive, so with inflation, we know costs are going up.
And also-
We know we're going to spend more money, right?
And if, it, it doesn't, to me, as you're thinking about CPI inflation, that's just for the prices of, you know, the pens that the city buys and, you know, the prices of goods. It's not the price of labor. And if we think about the way we expend, we spend more on labor than we do on outside goods and services. And labor increases at a rate generally 0.75 to 1% higher than inflation. So there's going to be a squeeze everywhere amongst the state. And I'm not suggesting large government, not that. I'm just suggesting that even status quo is not sustainable, given this, the way that I understand the GAN limit's put together. So, I don't know if it's rallying the troops in one of our council governments, or SCAG, or whatever, to go, to try to get a constitutional amendment for that, that part? Because I think that's going to affect everybody. Or, you know, we, we talk about our special case and maybe get some kind of exemption, because we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' money and grew a professional fire department without asking for extra money. So, you know, at the detriment of infrastructure and, you know, and staff raises and all those other things.
Well, so, I mean, to me, there's, there's two points on this. There's a short term and there's a long term. And I, and I clearly hear you on the long term, that through our associations and our boards and liaisons, that we should find out where other cities are going with this. Potentially, you know, this, this is a perfect California cities type thing in my mind. But there's the short term of, you know, we may be facing this in a month or two months with the next budget. Because this is, you know, this, this report was, was for the, the previous year, right? It was '24, '25, not '25, '26. And so when the '25, '26 budget comes, we may be facing mandatory cuts.
Well, this looks at the revenue side of things. So, we don't know that we're going to necessarily hit that until the calculation's done. We're talking about potentially increasing expenditures and needing some type of revenue enhancement for that. That's the bigger concern. So maybe not when the budget comes out, because, again, it has to do with revenue side of things, not the expenditure side of things.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Right. The GAN limit limits what you can spend.
But, I thought it limited what you, because it's calculated in what you bring in.
It's calculated based on what you bring in, but it limits what the government can spend.
So you can bring in more-
You just can't spend it.
Can't spend it.
That's why I was saying, we really don't have a choice. If we reach that level, we're either going to have to cut our spending back, or give the money back. We don't really have a choice. Well, you have a choice. Neither is good for keeping our city government well.
So we have a revenue enhancement committee.
Which, which means we need to-
So I think this needs to be, to be part of the discussion, because why raise revenue if you can't spend the money? You know? Or figure out something strategically around the GAN limit and revenue enhancement. My recommendation.
So right now, it's a receive and file, but we could ask to repurpose the committee. We have to do that through council?
It's, it's the city manager's committee, so I could take advisement from my council liaisons and make those changes.
Yeah, I think, I think that it seems that this has to be part of the discussion. All right. Well, then, if it's a receive and-
Mayor, if I may, I think one of the discussions that we are going to, it was already on our agenda to include to the revenue enhancement committee, was that if, if a general tax was an option, that it was going to be accompanied by a GAN limit-
Override.
Override, as, as two parts to the, to the election. So the voters would have to vote on, vote on both.
I don't, I don't know if we can combine them into one, into one initiative or not vote. We had contemplated two.
Well, I mean, if, yeah, if it's, if it's, if there's a ballot measure come from the council, it's going to have to be, it's not a 50-plus-one anyway. So I would have contemplated, it would have to be two different.
Not all are 50-plus-one, even if it's from council, is that correct?
Ask the question again, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
A ballot initiative for, for revenue.
Right. So if it's a special tax, it's going to be 2/3s. If it's a general tax, it's going to be 50%, a simple majority.
So, so a general tax is different than a special tax for public safety. General tax would be 50.
Simple majority.
Yeah, I, I hope that they would not contemplate something like that together. I think they should be separate, for sure. It seems like the GAN override is a, that's, that's, we have, we have to get that.
So, so I think-
Somehow, at some point. I don't know if we can talk about that now, if we have to agendize that. I guess we can, right?
Wouldn't it be something-
Agendize over a future meeting?
Are we agendizing the GAN limit for the future meeting? Are we directing city manager to have the GAN limit as a discussion of the revenue committee?
That's fine with me. I mean, we can bring it back here if necessary, but I mean, it's a good start.
I think the direction-
Mayor, I may have offered a suggestion that as soon as the finance director has the calculations done, that we bring that report back to council.
Before the '25, '26, '25, '26?
Correct.
Yeah, oh, in advance of the budget.
Yes, yes. No, I, I, okay. Yes, I definitely think we need to do that. Sorry, yes. We need to, to do that, and then we should also direct the revenue committee to be, to be briefed on GAN and understand the impacts of that. All right. It's a receive and file, so no vote needed. We've got the next item, amending Chapter 3.4 of Title III of municipal code. City Attorney, go ahead, go soon.
Mayor, as, as the council's aware, the city is part of the risk pool called SIRA. The risk pool essentially functions as an insurer. The city is self-insured through a joint powers authority, that's SIRA. And anytime there is a claim for money damages filed against the city, city staff submits that claim to SIRA, our risk pool, to see if they'll cover that expense. And SIRA has to make a determination whether that expense is, is covered within the memorandum of coverage, and if so, whether they're willing to settle that claim, or they want to fight it, and it's going to go to litigation. City staff looked, and we couldn't find a policy that formalizes our current practice. And our current practice is that our human resources director slash assistant city manager is the one that reviews all these. And then with the city manager's consent, we'll decide whether they want, whether city staff wants to settle some of these claims or to reject them and fight them. The way this settlement process works, it's two-pronged. First, SIRA evaluates it, and then they provide input to the city. And the city has to provide input to SIRA whether or not they're on the same page about settling. If the two parties disagree, then it's, it's probably going to go to litigation if they disagree on whether to settle. SIRA does technically have an override over our disagreement. But speaking to the SIRA rep, what they explained to me was, we will litigate it so long as the city is willing to cover the difference in what we are willing to settle versus what it actually, what the actual judgment might be. So, in talking to city staff, I felt it was important to have, to formalize some kind of policy to determine how these, how these general liability claims and workers' compensation claims, because there are two different types covered by this memorandum of coverage, are resolved. The current statutory limit, if the city council chooses to delegate to staff, is $50,000. City manager's signing authority is technically $75,000. But to settle these claims under the government code, the maximum that you can delegate your authority is $50,000. And so this ordinance amendment contemplates a delegation of authority to the city manager for up to $50,000. And anything beyond that threshold needs to come to the city council in closed session for the city council to determine whether or not they want to settle that claim. And this applies, by the way, this applies to claims pre-litigation, and then settlement amounts post-litigation, so, or pending litigation. That distinction makes sense. And that concludes my report.
Questions?
So, before this, what has been our practice?
It's, it's, to my understanding, if it's been a very high dollar amount, staff uses their discretion whether or not to bring that before the city council, and I believe they have on some occasions. But generally, these are all resolved at the staff level.
So this is happening anyway?
This is, this is happening all the time.
How many have we had in the last couple of years?
I'll leave that to the, to our human resources director to answer.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. In the last few years, we've had, well, since we joined SIRA in 2021, we've had a handful of claims settled. It's, without looking at the number, probably about 10 to 15 claims that we've settled. But a lot of these claims are small amount claims. Maybe a tree that, a city tree that damaged a vehicle, or a city vehicle damaging another parked vehicle. And those cases are, the amounts are small. Typically, those are going to be more likely, more than likely to be settled. The larger claims that come in, liability claims that come in, those are typically received through the claimant's attorney. SIRA receives the, the claim. They will assign an attorney to defend the city and proceed with their discovery efforts, and from there, we try to figure out the, the fault, if there is any fault to the city. If not, the, the claim gets rejected. If the claim is not rejected, it will continue litigation. And if, let's say, for example, the, the claim, initial claim is a million dollars, our SIRA and attorneys will, if, if there is city fault, then they, they will try to negotiate a much lesser amount. And that's where the discussion with the city, along with, with SIRA and the attorneys, will have that discussion to negotiate a much lesser, depending on the, the claim itself. And that's just an example of what could happen. But typically, the, the 10 to 15 claims that we've received over the last few years, which for, for a small city like this, it's actually not too bad, have been smaller amounts.
And this is tangentially related, but I just... He mentioned attorneys, I just want to clarify. This risk pool has their own attorneys. They have a list of attorneys they use for these types of claims. And we only get involved, our law firm only gets involved in this litigation when the risk pool determines that the claim that's been filed is outside of the memorandum of coverage agreed to by the risk pool in the city. So if it's outside the memorandum of coverage, it's a type of claim they don't cover. Like the election case we had, then that's when our law firm takes over litigation from SIRA. Otherwise, SIRA's handling litigation, and their attorneys are handling litigation.
For the smaller ones, we know what they are because they go through HR, right?
Yes, they go through the claims process, received by the city, then sent over to SIRA or the third-party administrator that handles the claim. And through several back-and-forth discovery of information, if the claim, if there's no fault to the city, we reject the claim.
So this is, but this is both workers' comp, which you implied with your HR question, and general liability?
Correct, so we have an SIR, which is a self-insurance retention, essentially it's a deductible. For per occurrence, it's for workers' comp is fifty thousand, and for general liability is twenty-five thousand.
So we're talking... So the fifty thousand dollar deductible is kind of the limit that we're... That's being contemplated here? Is that the reason for choosing that number?
The reason for choosing that number was it's the maximum allowable under government code.
Other questions? Alright, then we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker card, and it is from Glenn Lambden.
Mr. Lambden, welcome back.
I have kind of three points on this. One is just generic, and the other two are specific with the report. The generic, it's kind of like when I was here a month ago. You know, we vote our elected officials, and we give you the legislative authority to act on our part. Basically, you make law and you spend money. Fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend. And it's... We really want our city council involved, our elected people, the ones that we put there. You know, when we have these settlement claims, we want our council with our city manager and our city attorney to go in closed session. And we have five council members who can, you can look at all different, bring up different ideas, and hopefully come to an agreement, where three of you can come to an agreement. And then you give our staff the authority to spend fifty thousand dollars. That was the second point. The third point is, in the report, and not only in the actual staff report, but the way it was presented tonight, it only says that it allows the city manager to make these decisions up to fifty thousand dollars. But if you read the language in the text itself, where we would amend our ordinance, it gives the city, not only the city manager, but his or her designee. Who's that? Again, we take the power, you would take the power away from our elected officials, give it to a city manager who we knew, but you have no idea who the designee might be. So there's this inconsistency between the staff report and what would actually be the text. But again, I think from the citizens, we elected you. We want you there to be the ones that actually make the decision to spend our money, especially when it's as much as fifty thousand dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambden. Alright. Discussion?
Well, I do agree with Mr. Lambden on that, Mayor Lambden, on the fifty thousand dollar level. I think that is, you know, I mean, in this day and age, government spends a lot of money, and that's really not that much. But fifty thousand is fifty thousand, right? And I think he's right, people do expect us to make those kinds of judgments. Now, I don't know what level we could release that at, maybe fifteen or twenty? I mean, I'm not hearing that most of these claims are even in that ballpark, right?
In terms of, for workers' comp, it's a little different than the general liability claims that come in. Workers' comp can be ongoing for many years. So the limit, the fifty thousand that the city per occurrence will cover for the workers' comp claim is for when an employee gets injured, you hope that that is a quick recovery, and they come back to work, and it closes. Now, there may be ongoing payments to the employee depending on the type of injury. If we have long-term or presumptive claims that come in, those are going to be costly to the city. And so the fifty dollar, fifty thousand dollar per occurrence is essentially an amount that, through the SIR, that reduces the overall premium that the city pays to be into this insurance pool. For example, when we were with JPIA, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, they were at first dollar. So as soon as the claim is submitted, they will then take care of it from the beginning. There's no fifty thousand dollars. But every year, annually, we would pay a premium for the insurance that was a pretty high premium. When we transferred over to SIRA, the SIR that we designated, which in this case was fifty thousand for workers' comp, twenty-five for general liability, reduced that annual premium, so in hopes that we will reduce our injuries within the city. And the city does have a good record of keeping our injuries low, so it reduces our... The city having to pay up to the fifty thousand dollars for each claim. And so, but then there are some cases that will take it over the fifty thousand. Once it reaches the fifty thousand, beyond that, then the risk pool is responsible for that. And beyond that, it, you know, it affects the overall pool annual premiums. So, but that's a smaller amount in terms of increasing our annual premiums versus if we didn't have the SIR, we would pay a much higher premium at the, each fiscal year. I hope that makes a little bit sense.
So, my understanding of workers' comp, and I don't work in workers' comp, but it is, some of it is lost wages sometimes?
Sometimes.
A lot of it is medical costs?
It's mostly medical costs. There is some lost wages depending on the injury and the time off. And so our efforts in workers' comp is, when an employee is injured, if they need to be off work, then that's... We deal with that, but if there is a situation where the employee can be released to work on modified duty, we do our best to make sure that we can find modified work. And it's usually a short period of time, and then they're back to full duty. So we work with the doctors, we work with the employees in those cases. And the cases that we don't, that the employee cannot come back to work for because of the type of injury and the type of work that they do, it gets... The medical costs can increase as they continue their recovery.
So I have two scenarios. I just, I'd like you to, I know we're in discussion, but if you could kind of explain how this would play out. The easier one is, let's say somebody has hard costs. They go through the workers' comp doctor or whatever. They have hard costs of thirty-five thousand dollars. They're injured at work. We have a fifty thousand dollar deductible. We're gonna have to pay that thirty-five grand anyway. How does that procedurally go through the process?
So the SIRA will pay for those medical expenses. They will pay the employee as well if there's that... It's kind of unique because there are certain cases where the employer will continue paying the employee if they're on modified work. We'll continue paying them, they're here, they're...
Let's say there's no lost wages, it's just medical costs. It's hard cost, it's, you know, there's a... They submit thirty-five, thirty-five grand, and so we have to pay for it rather than them paying out of pocket.
So SIRA, the third-party administrator that handles our workers' comp claims will pay those medical costs. Every quarter, SIRA will send the city an invoice for the... Up to the fifty thousand for that particular workers' comp claim for that employee. These were the costs incurred from this period to this period. And then the city would pay that amount. Once it reaches the fifty thousand, then we no longer will pay for any additional medical cost beyond that.
So if it's a hundred grand, we pay fifty grand, and then SIRA picks up the rest?
That's correct.
So that's workers' comp. Now, let's look at general liability. Property damage, it's shown receipts are, you know, it's, a tree falls on a Ferrari, right? And there's thirty thousand dollars in bodywork that needs to be done, but our deductible's twenty-five thousand. But the person doesn't wanna go through the process because they can do it, and they said, "Well, I'll settle for twenty-five just to kind of get out of it." That would be kind of how, what we're contemplating here, to settle the claim and make it go away?
Similar, yes. We wouldn't necessarily receive the claim and send a check. We would, there is a discovery period, there's documents, there's records, there's police records, and so on and so forth. The, if, once the, our third-party administrator does its investigation and determines that the city is at fault for this damage, we would then be responsible for the damages. If it's thirty thousand dollars, we would be responsible for twenty-five thousand dollars of it. Now, there may be some negotiating in that regard to bring the cost down. And so we would essentially pay up to the twenty-five thousand if it was a thirty thousand dollar claim.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna add, I don't know if this is clarified, but even if it's a general liability case, and let's assume it's fifty thousand dollars, and we're only covering twenty-five thousand, and SIRA's covering another twenty-five, SIRA still has to come to us and make sure we're okay with the settlement, that even the portion that they're covering. Because if we're not okay with the portion that they're covering, for whatever reason, maybe we wanna fight it. They may fight it, but we have to cover the difference of any litigations or damages that... Any judgment that comes after the fact beyond the fifty. So I don't want, I don't want you to think that somehow this fifty thousand figure is in any way tied to this deductible or not. It's not, they're totally independent.
I'm just trying to run scenarios in my mind and see how this would play out. Because obviously, in a general liability claim, somebody will hire an attorney on contingency basis. And if it goes to trial, they probably pay forty, forty percent of the recovery. If it settles, maybe they only pay twenty percent of the recovery, so there's incentive to settle. I'm just trying to run through the scenarios and see if this is, this makes sense. That's what I'm trying to do here. Hopefully, it's helpful to you guys, I don't know.
I guess, you know, in my mind, I'd love to hear more from your perspective on... We already give the city manager signing authority to seventy-five thousand.
See, I was just contemplating that. I was gonna ask what that, I thought it was only fifty, but it's seventy-five, isn't it? And so we're already doing this, I mean, with all the...
We've already empowered him with that amount of it, so...
Because we don't wanna constantly come back and micromanage the expense of the purchasing of the things for the city.
This is a liability that opens up. And then we've got some liabilities that I'm understanding, the workers' comp is an ongoing liability, right? It's not a, it's not a simple liability.
Correct.
And what is our current process or procedure for bringing things before council? Like, is it, how do we determine which lawsuit you bring before council in closed session?
Those are rare, but we do, we have had them in the past. Presumptive claims are one example of a claim that can be presented, that will be presented to council for discussion because of the amount could be very, very large. And those claims are discussed and brought forward so that there is dialogue between the city council and a representative from SIRA or the attorneys, so that the council is aware of that claim and what the cost will be and what our options are in terms of litigate, continue litigation, or even litigating the claim or settling. And so those discussions would happen in closed session when they're large amounts.
And you said SIRA would come and brief it because they're the ones arguing it?
Yes, so SIRA, a representative from SIRA, most likely the attorney that's handling the claim, will meet in closed session to go over the claim. And we have, we've had this, many years ago, we've had a presumptive claim that our, then JPIA came in and briefed the council on the claim. Ultimately, it was paid out because that's the, the authority made that decision. But they informed the council and the city that this is the direction that this is going to. Now, the city didn't have to pay anything for the claim. It was just that, at the end of the fiscal year, when we receive our premiums, that's when the adjustments are made to pay for, and that goes for all of the pool members that will pay for those types of claims. And that's where the premiums are affected. In this case, our premiums are reduced because we have the SIR of the fifty thousand or twenty-five thousand, which reduces our annual premium.
Yeah, and I've experienced it. I was working on a case recently where during the lunch break in my testimony, it was against a municipality, and they had to... There was a settlement offer for seven figures, and they were trying to get eight figures, let's put it that way, but very close. And had to go to the, they said, "We have a tentative agreement, it has to go before their city council to then approve it," even though, I don't know what their, they had a JPIA or SIRA or whatever, but it still had to go to the council to be approved, the settlement did. Judgment, it's a judgment, and that's the whole type of...
Seven figures?
Yeah. Seven figures.
I'm not talking about seven figures.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I can go with this. It's been a standard practice for us, and we're just trying to codify it, right? Yeah, I mean, you know, it comes down to, we need to be effective at our governance. So I do agree with the larger principle, but we can't all be sitting there in the administrator's seat trying to, you know, five of us trying to decide, you know, whether they're gonna do something or not. We have sat in settlement, just in closed session, since I've been on the council a bunch of times.
Yeah, and again, the city manager has brought things under his signing authority to consent or just for transparency. But that's this city manager.
Right.
To the point that public comment was, obviously, we're not gonna always have the city manager.
Yeah. Guess not.
So this is an action item, right? So are we of the mind of adopting it at the, up to fifty?
I, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, it's still a matter of, you know... If we had all the personnel in the world, I mean, but we're shoestring budget here. So it seems to me like we should empower our people as much as we can. If we have, if this had been done, this is standard practice, I don't have a problem with it.
It's standard practice, and we're now just codifying what has been, already been...
I mean, I'm not aware of any case that we've settled that has come back to bite us. I don't think, I'm not aware of any situation where we've made the wrong judgment. And I know we've sat in plenty of closed sessions for larger settlement discussions, so...
And I just wanna confirm, from what I heard from assistant city manager Hernandez, sorry, Miguel, I just wanted to say Miguel. Hernandez, that if there's a settlement before the city manager to make a decision on, the city manager's not on the island making this decision on their own? There's actually SIRA involved within this, within the negotiation for the settlement, is that correct? The attorneys from SIRA, it's not like the city manager's making this determination by themselves?
That is correct. There are numerous meetings prior to settling. The discussion of, currently, we have a very large claim that was a very large number. We're bringing it down to a much smaller number, but those are through discussions with the city to help, you know, facilitate that and negotiate that down.
I just wanna make sure that there's not, and it's not super clear, but there's not a party coming independent to city hall and saying, "Let's not involve SIRA, let's just, let's just get this done."
No.
That does not happen.
That does not happen.
I wanna make sure that's clear.
Okay. It sounds like we've reached consensus?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, um, I think I'll entertain a, a motion on this item.
Move to approve, uh, the amendment of ordinance number fourteen eighty-one, amending chapter three dot four zero of title three of the CIRM module municipal code to authorize the city manager to allow compromiser settlement claims up to fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have reached the magic hour of ten o'clock, right on the nose. I'm thinking, so, city manager Reno, so what does our agenda look like for future meetings?
We, we do have two public hearings, one of them is the Alverno six-month review. Uh, we do have a mid-year budget, uh, presentation from our finance director. And we have two items for discussion. One, um, was, uh, the risk reduction, um, position for the fire department, and we can, we can move that. Um, and then the transportation contract is something that we want to discuss on April eighth, so.
We need it, put that on the.
If, if, if council wants to move, um, the discussion on strategic plan, we could definitely, uh, move it to, uh, April eighth, and we can, we can shuffle, uh, at least one item around to, to accommodate, to, to make sure that we're, we're, we're done by ten P M.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think, I mean, I also, uh, got a little whisper from Councilmember Garcia that, that this is also something that, you know, it warrants a broader discussion by council.
It sure does.
Um.
With the, um, yeah.
So do we need to make a, a motion or anything to, to?
I, I think for purposes of the minutes, to just make a motion to continue the item would be helpful.
All right.
And it doesn't need to be a date certain, because it's not a public hearing.
So I'll move for that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are at, um, future agenda items.
Well, I would like to see get a, see if we can put something together with the historical society on that, uh, maybe some kind of partnership on doing some kind of historical assessment in the area that got burned, the areas that got burned. And maybe talk about what we could do to contribute to that effort, if they're interested.
All right. Councilmember Goss, did you also want us to look at, um, expanding the scope of some kind of ordinance?
I think we should probably have a conversation about it.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if I want to e- expand the scope of it being an urgency ordinance. Uh, urgency is when you lose your house, right? But some of the things we heard, I think, are worth discussing in terms of what we can do to try to help, if there's something we can do, yeah.
I- i- and, and that's specifically in terms of, um, home hardening?
Yeah, that kind of thing.
Okay, so fire, fire mitigation, protection measures, okay.
Right.
So it'd be like, is that then waivers to historic, like, 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 like? I, I think that the, the anchor, at least the way I'm hearing it and thinking about it, i- is an anchor to home hardening and being able to have flexibility related to that.
Defensive space, home hardening, all that, yeah. And, um, you know, this, this issue of the extreme fire zone being extended so, so low, I mean, I don't know what we can really say about that, but we, maybe, maybe we talk about that in that discussion. I mean, what does that really mean for our residents, what is it gonna mean for insurance? What is it going to mean for the city in terms of our?
Councilmember Goss, I, I believe in, our fire chief is here, maybe he can clarify, but I believe he is gonna give a report to the council because there are some deliverables that the city has to produce, uh, based on the new maps. And that may be, uh, covered in, in his update.
He's still here, too. I knew we were gonna call him.
Absolutely, sir, it's all riveting, and I, I wouldn't miss it. Um, uh, yeah, thank you for the opportunity, as, as we're aware, the, the new maps came out yesterday, and part of what we are obligated to do is make those, um, available to the public and available for comment, a public comment within thirty days of receipt. And also to, um, have council adopt an ordinance accepting the maps, um, within a hundred and twenty days of receipt. So that will be coming forth in, in ordinance form, uh, for council's approval. Um, we will not have any authority to change the maps, and we will have to adopt them. However, we will have a potential ability to make them more stringent, if you will, uh, but we cannot, uh, degrade what the, the state has put out. We will have to adopt that at a minimum. So that, that will be coming, uh, be coming forth. And we will be able to, to, at that point, discuss, uh, any potential implications that it will have for our residents.
All right, thank you, Chief. Anything else for future items on the agenda? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.